Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Buck?
Here.
Alderman Lauchy?
Here.
Alderman Jenkins?
Here.
Alderman O'Connor?
Here.
And Mayor Irvin is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty city council meeting? And motion made by Alderman Jenkins and seconded by Alderman Hardburns. All those in favor?
Uh.
Guy? Motion carries by voice vote. All right, let's go on to presentations. Last city council. We had, we shared how we are communicating the numbers of COVID nineteen cases in Aurora through a new dashboard for, for our city. But that is really just the tip of the iceberg of our community outreach. I've asked our director of communications, Clayton Muhammad, to briefly share some of the outreach efforts we've had these past two weeks, media coverage and some of the other plans for the next period of time. Mr. Muhammad?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Always good to see you. As we reported at the last meeting, we're launching a new dashboard, which we did within that week. It's got some great feedback. It gives the community really some of that data that they really are looking for beyond just flat numbers. As far as gender and race and zip code in particular. So we're happy to have launched that. Thanks again to IT. But if you look at the broader scope of communications, I'll be really brief here. We've launched a series of what we call community conversations around COVID nineteen. Being able to talk about specific topical areas that impact Aurora and give our community that face-to-face contact, if you will, even on screen. Conversations during the month of April, we, we will have hosted nine in total. And they range from those that are recovering from COVID to our ed talk with the superintendents. If you can imagine, there were Aurora's who still today, I didn't know we had so many school districts, but to be able to benchmark best practices was absolutely great from that. We've had conversations with our federal officials and fellow mayors throughout the state. The mayor hosted a roundtable that picked up media coverage from the south, the north, and all throughout the Chicagoland, really putting Aurora right there, situating us in, in the lead in this area. We've hosted a fire shy chat. Alderman Smith, you'll be happy about fire pits and things of that sort, you know, being able to push our, our leaders of the topical areas right out there to the community, which clarifies what we're trying to do. And even last night, we, we broke away from a city base into allowing the poets, our poet laureate and the deputy lords to have a Monday night motivation and, and give poetry around COVID and around inspiration. Now, for the rest of the week, and you received this in your email, we're hosting specific community conversations tomorrow on feeding Aurora and the importance of our food pantries and regional food providers. On Thursday, the night before the mandate goes into, in force, being enforced for face coverage, we're having a conversation with mask makers and covering face covering makers in the city of Aurora, people who have formed organizations or doing it right out of their living room, being able to help the community. And on Friday, and we're really looking at animal care. We've seen the stories of pets contracting COVID and zoo animals, where we want to be able to calm those fears for the community while shining a spotlight on our zoo and our animal control. We're partnering with those two organizations and with local veterinarians just to give that perspective. And so when we conclude this week, we would have hosted ten altogether and looking forward to some positive and powerful conversations next week, including a new conversation on those who are recovering in Aurora. They range in age, race, gender, size of town, and they have some pretty compelling stories about their recoveries that we look to share to bring some hope in the community. So again, want to be brief and just to share with you this, this overall communications plan that we are literally reaching tens of thousands of Auroraans through our community conversations per video. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muhammad. Let's go on to the next presentation. And Mr. Jeff Anderson, I'm going to ask you for this presentation because it's so important and we need to see the faces of both Mr. Alexandra and Mr. Marty Lyons. I'm going to ask you to a, do a speaker view for this one as well. The next presentation is COVID nineteen financial update presentation with both Marty Lyons and Alex Alexandra.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Great to see everyone.
Hold on one second, Mr. Alexandra. Mr. Anderson, Jeff Anderson, are you on?
Yes, sir.
Can you make this a speaker view for me for both Alex, well, Alex, Alexandra and Marty Lyons will be speaking?
Yeah, when they, when they speak, they'll show.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marty, I believe you're going to share your screen. There you go. Thank you. So we wanted to spend a few moments tonight giving you a COVID nineteen financial contingency planning update. Wanted to let you know on everything that has been going on to date from both a revenue exploration of opportunities and resources, as well as our own ongoing scenario modeling and where things are going in relation to the crisis and its financial impact. So first slide, please. We have had and pulled together on pretty much a very intensive and daily basis, a citywide multi-disciplinary team that's been assigned to identify, explore, understand, apply for and track all applicable local, state and federal grant opportunities. This team is led by our CFO, the mayor's office, Dr. Holloway and her team and others throughout the city with the express purpose of trying to maximize all opportunities for the city to apply for and hopefully obtain as many grants or other financial assistance that we can to not only combat the expenses related to COVID nineteen, but also begin to lay the groundwork for our financial situation that, that is coming, the longer that this pandemic continues. In this endeavor, we are working with partners, including our city lobbyists, county, state and federal elected officials, many of whom we are either in some level of communication on a daily, if not weekly basis in person, on Zoom calls or on phone calls. We're also finding invaluable right now our involvement and membership with our community-oriented groups, the COGS and associations, Illinois Municipal League, Metro West, DuPage Mayor and Managers Conference and the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. A special note about the first three, IML, we have been fortunate, being the second largest city in the state that we, you know, we have the mayor as a board member on the executive committee of IML. We also have been involved in a number of influential committees that have actually had great success in getting information about Aurora, requests about Aurora directly to the governor's office. We recently were involved prior to the current pronouncement proclamation by the governor for the next period. We had quite a bit of influence in a number of the items that actually are being announced. So we continue to use those resources for the betterment of Aurora and all of our situation that we find ourselves in. Next slide, please. Uh, good, there, keep going, Marty. There you go. So from a local perspective, the CARES Act that was passed, the funding that involves eligible expenses that we're able to submit for reimbursement and we receive guidance that and we are preparing such reimbursement requests from Kane, DuPage and Will counties, who will be recipients of CARES Act funding. So again, that would be eligible expenses regarding COVID nineteen. So that is in process and we should be finalizing those requests to our counties, to, to the counties, the, the primary counties that we're in of Kane, DuPage and Will very shortly. From a state of Illinois perspective, we have received great guidance, fund opportunities from Illinois Emergency Management Agency, as well as great collaboration from IDPH. As you know, also, our county health departments have been very instrumental, very influential, tremendous resources for us as we respond to this crisis. DCEO had announced just prior to the pandemic, Rebuild Illinois, which is a DCEO infrastructure grant program. So we've had engineering and economic development assembling cost estimates for a number of potential city infrastructure projects, ranking them. And we are in the midst also of submitting those for consideration for some significant grant money for city infrastructure projects, which would tremendously help the budget, especially from a capital funding perspective. Next slide, please. In addition, at the federal level, a lot going on, a lot of opportunities, CDBG through HUD. I believe we had previously advised the council, we've already received over nine hundred thousand dollars in COVID nineteen related monies this year. And I think you'll see from a later slide, a later proposal to the council, great work done by our team to come up with the proposed stable fund, which heavily involves CDBG funding through HUD. Availability of section one oh eight revolving loan fund, staff has advised there is a little over four and a half million in additional borrowing capacity for activities that are CDBG eligible. So we are tracking these as a potential tool for funding. The HUD folks, we had a meeting with the regional director two weeks ago. They have relaxed some of their requirements to make this a more attractive and easier option for us to use when we are considering funding in case capital funding is short. Similarly, the home, some of you know them as home funds, the Home Investment Partnership Program. Again, HUD has recently received, released a number of waivers that will make home funds easier to use when it comes to affordable housing. And so we are monitoring future development deals as well for eligibility. So again, even in this time of crisis, some of these key federal opportunities are there and we are not losing sight of them. More specific to COVID nineteen, there's been a lot of support and our EMA folks along with our team on the virtual emergency operations center that meets three times a week. There is the FEMA Disaster Recovery Fund. That also is a multi-disciplinary team from various departments who would normally perhaps be sitting in a real EOC at the police department, but with our situation is all virtual. And so we have filed and continue to track all eligible expenses for FEMA disaster recovery in COVID nineteen assistance. On the public safety side, just a sampling there of three, two APD and one AFD opportunities. One is direct police support for coronavirus emergency funding, as well as JAG burn grant. And then AFD, there's specifically FEMA assistance to firefighters grants that all of which are either in the process of being applied for or have been applied for. Last, but certainly not least, a much used word stimulus, and there have been stimulus, various packages of stimulus that have been approved by the federal government. We are laser focused on stimulus funding for direct local governments without strings attached. As you'll hear from Marty in a moment, he said before, we are facing a significant budget deficit. And there is much movement and much discussion and we are preparing for the eventual return to Congress session, I believe of May fourth. So we've been working very hard to make the case at the state and federal level for direct stimulus funding to communities like ours, cities like ours that are under five hundred thousand dollars. So we will keep everybody apprised as all of these grants come in and we've got one central tracking site that we're using. And so we will pass on hopefully good news as these opportunities come to fruition. So I'm going to turn it over to Marty for the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Alex, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before I forget, I also definitely want to thank Dr. Holloway, who brought in a new piece of software to help us with grant tracking. And because we were meeting for the last month trying to track all of these grants, the good old fashioned way with the spreadsheet, and she and her team have come up with a, a new detailed software system that can do a good job in a database oriented package. If you have a detailed questions regarding that tracking process, I encourage you to talk to her. It was a welcome relief for me, trying to keep track of a variety of things. And now having this tool to just try and keep track of all of the grants across all the departments, all the agencies, et cetera. So without further ado, you know, I've said this before, the financial impacts are still not known because we are now at the end of April. At the end of April is really just the end of January in sales tax reporting timeline. And income tax, it's the end of February. So we still don't have any data yet from the state. I'm hoping to get that in mid-May to mid, mid-June as far as our two largest state shared revenues, sales tax and the local government distributed fund made mainly up of MFT and state income tax, both of which are given to us on a per capita basis. So as everyone knows, shelter in place may not last beyond May, and I'm not making, that's not a commentary, that's a okay, the reverse means do we get to get out and in June and start quote unquote opening up. So that's good news on the, the revenue side of things. So I'll leave it at that. How did I get muted? Okay, sorry.
You need one more time, Marty.
Anything, so.
There you go.
There we go. So operating revenues, most of our discussion is going to continue to be on the general operating fund. We will talk a little bit about gaming or other related funds, but for the most part, this is hitting our general operating revenues. The six-month duration is optimistic with respect to revenues being lower than twenty nineteen. It's a good news, bad news. Twenty nineteen was a great year for revenue. We exceeded budget. We did a great job. The, our economy was doing well. We won't repeat that in twenty and it's unlikely, according to any projection, that we'll repeat it in twenty-one. So we will need to plan accordingly. I'm doing models right now that are eighteen months and that means that we'll be doing both twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one budget planning over the next ninety days. As you may recall, we start our budget process for the next year right about this time. We're not going to start next year's budget process until a little later towards the summer as we get a good handle on where we're at with twenty twenty dollars and actually know what the revenue impacts will be. So cash balances, this is a repeat, although it's gone up a little bit. We have an estimated thirty-five million in projected revenue loss in twenty twenty. I think that's middle of the road. I did a roundtable with fifteen other finance officers and they did another one just last Thursday with a, a lot of other finance officers. I'm going to do a third with large city finance officers. And we have some that are much more pessimistic and others that are much more optimistic. If you are a small town that just has two grocery stores for your sales tax, you're not losing much. The grocery stores are doing pretty good overall. But it's the big box stores, the auto dealers, of those kinds of stores that we have a lot of, we don't have as much in the auto section, but it's the restaurants and, and those things that do sales tax that will make up our biggest loss. The deferral of revenue by the county is just that, it's a deferral, but we are looking at the potential that we might only get ninety percent of property taxes paid in twenty twenty. We need to think that way because there could be some people who just can't make their property tax payment. They may get to it before tax sale or workout deals all the way into twenty twenty-one, but we shouldn't count on a usual ninety-nine percent property tax collection. I've talked about this before, we are looking at all locally controlled funds to consider support for our general operating fund. We've confirmed that motor fuel tax funds cannot be used. We already knew that pension funds could not be used. So we are definitely testing the waters. To Alex's point earlier, we asked about ten different ways to Sunday to try and find out if we could use MFT for public work salaries, for instance, and the answer was a solid no. So other cash balances, special revenue funds and, and capital funds will be considered. We'll look at grants and we'll look at loans. And what does that mean? Well, if, if we never intend to pay a given fund back, for instance, if we don't ever want to pay the gaming fund back, it's a grant to the general fund. If we're going to try and work out some kind of a long-term loan where the, the water fund would loan the general fund money because it's an enterprise fund, we'd work out a longer term payback schedule that would help the water fund keep up with all of their capital needs over the next several years. So that, that jumps down to that enterprise fund. So expense issues. Surprisingly, we, we do our EOC meeting three times a week and the common theme for APD and AFD is calls for service are equal or down compared to last year. People are staying at home, people are not having a lot of calls for services and that's a really great thing. The police department is also, can't say enough about the, the ability that we're showing by going to a twelve-hour shift during this emergency. That's really made it possible to have good staffing throughout this timeframe, even if we have officers off shift. As you are aware, we are doing rotating shifts. My shift this week is Monday, Wednesday, Friday in, in the office and Tuesday, Thursday at home. So I'm at home today and we're doing that for all forty finance staff. It's working out very well. And I know that Ken Schroth is doing similar things depending on what the, the work involved. And the same with John Curley. One of the things to keep in mind is when we open up in June or whenever that timeframe is, is to keep an eye out that we contain ourselves and not jump into a lot of overtime activity. We can't have the, the logic of we want to catch up. We, we need to stay conservative as we figure out what the new normal will be for our revenues, because in June will be the first time we'll see revenues for half of March. So we need to just be on guard for that as we hit the summer months. So what are our action steps? And we talked about this at the April meeting, the first April meeting of the year that we've suspended all new hire activities to June one. That doesn't mean that we're not promoting. We've had some retirements. We need to have people in key positions. So we are doing promotions if needed and where the new hire is back at the lowest level in the organization where we're not hiring in from the outside to keep our expenses in check. DP stands for decision packages. So we have not implemented any decision packages since about late March. Those are suspended. We're reviewing all capital improvements, plan projects, suspending all approvals until, till June one. With one major exception, we'll be bringing the roadway maintenance program to council in May. We believe we've worked out a, a good solution where we're going to use less general funds like municipal motor fuel tax and the capital improvements fund and more state motor fuel tax funds. We can do that for this year without impacting next year's MFT situation, but we won't be able to do it any longer than that. We will then run out of state motor fuel tax funds by next year if we rely too heavily on that for our annual resurfacing and reconstruction program. So we have looked at reducing all of our large POs and the way of thinking of this is if a project's currently in operation, we ask the vendor and the department in question, can you stop? Can you defer? What can we do right now? If we're not looking at a public safety, life safety issue, and we've had several million dollars in projects that are, that we've stopped just waiting to see how things shake out later in the year. We hope that we can get started, but if we can't, we know that those dollars weren't spent and we are working with each of those vendors to see whether we can extend into future years. We want to preserve those relationships. The, Ken Schroth and his team continue to work on a variety of in-house engineering work to make sure we're ready to move forward in twenty twenty-one or earlier with a lot of storm, combined sewer, water main improvements, all of our enterprise fund projects so that we can continue maintaining the, the key utility areas of the city and be ready to go. And finally, the, our, our further measures, if we, if our revenues are worse than thirty-five million dollar loss and/or we don't end up with a good bailout, we will look at expense reductions like we would in our budget process. So we have a good process where we talk with all staff throughout all the departments about how they would propose reductions and we're preparing for that during the month of May. So that'll be twenty twenty and departments will have a mind for also what their expense reductions will do into twenty twenty-one. So a focus on reductions for that longer period of time, not just a deferral of something for six months. So with that, I will stop and Alex, if you have any thing or mayor as far as a wrap-up, I will tell you that we didn't talk a lot about debt issuance and things like that, but we are working on that. My thanks to Chuck Nelson. He sent me a nice program about the Federal Reserve putting out a new program where we could borrow. Fortunately, we're a home rule authority community and our borrowing ability is better than most in the country, meaning that we have a lot of flexibility already and we'll be looking at both borrowing and deferring debt payments as options to get us through this year. All with the mind of the least amount of service disruption that we, we can have as possible. So we're not borrowing to avoid tough decisions, but if we don't have to have a, a major decrease in service provision that is mirroring this revenue issue, we'd like to avoid that. We would really like to smooth over this period with some strategic decisions on how we might take the thirty-five million dollar revenue loss and do what we do with pensions. Spread those over three or four years so we can really keep our operations in at the highest level possible. And I'll stop there.
Any questions from the Alderman? Thank you very much, Mr. Alderman Franco?
Yeah, a question about the twelve-hour shifts for the police officers. So why did we do that and what, how many hours do they normally work in a week? I'm assuming they're doing four twelve-hour shifts? Is that how that's working?
Chief Zeeman, are you on?
Or soon to be Deputy Chief Cross?
Cross isn't on. If Chief Zeeman is on, she's probably on mute. Zeeman?
Yes, and what, how many hours?
What?
The question, the question, go ahead, Marty.
Four twelve-hour shifts? Is that how that's working? Chief Zeeman, are you on?
No, Chief Zeeman is not on the phone.
Or?
I will, I will jump in though, but what we are, the reason we did the twelve-hour shifts was to be able to have eighteen to nineteen officers on shift without overtime. So it really throws in, you know, you think of five days on at eight hours a day, two days off, that's out the window. So you do have in a, a three, in a pay period, you could have three days of twelve for thirty-six and then four days of twelve for forty-eight and try and work it through. So you minimize your overtime during a pay period. And, and we are working through this. It's a, it's a, a great thing that we were able to work that out with the, the union during this timeframe. It won't go on forever. This is something that's just a part of the emergency that we're being faced, but it is definitely a temporary situation. So I, and Alex can certainly speak to that a little bit more on the bargaining front, but it is working as far as reducing the total amount of overtime we'd be seeing.
I think you explained that pretty well, Mr. Lyons. Is that acceptable answer there? Alderman Franco?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Alderman? Well, thank you, sir, for that presentation. I'm sure we'll be hearing a whole lot more about our finances in weeks to come. I'm sure we'll be hearing a whole lot more about our finances in weeks to come. All right, let's get on to the regular portion of the business. But before we do that, I'm going to ask for two items to be taken taken out of order. If there are no objections from the council, we would ask that we take two items out of order. Item 20-0247 and item 20-0251, both promotions for deputy deputy chief. Are there any objections taking that out of the out of order? Alderman, come off, come off mute and let me know. Are there any objections? All right, with no objections. Will the clerk please call the first item?
20-0247, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Keith Cross as Deputy Chief of Police for the City of Aurora, Illinois.
So there's been a motion by Alderman Hardburn, seconded by Alderman. I'm sorry, which Alderman was that?
Seville.
Alderman Seville. All right, before we take any questions, Ms. Lewis, you want to introduce Keith Cross and explain why we've made this promotion, request for a promotion? Your mute is on, ma'am.
So, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Unfortunately, we are losing our current Deputy Chief of Police, Keith Jackson. He is retiring. And so we're here to ask council to approve the appointment for Keith Cross. Keith currently serves as a commander in the police department. Has been with the with the city for 26 years, serving under Kristen Zeeman, our current Chief of Police. And we are just very excited to have him fulfill that role. His appointment will be effective today. And so that's why we are here for Keith.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion and a second on the, there's one on the motion, a second on the floor. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no questions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
You're on mute, Alderman Garza.
Yes? Alderman Masiacos?
Tom Cat, yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12As?
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Before we give them a clap and congratulations, we're going to ask that the clerk please administer the oath of office. Mr. Anderson?
All right.
And also with Cross today is his beautiful family, his son Devon and and wife Deanna. Good to see you all. Go ahead, Ms. Stallings.
All right, Deputy Chief Cross, can you please raise your right hand? And state after me. I state your name.
I, Keith Cross.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As Deputy Chief of the Aurora Police Department.
Deputy Chief of the Aurora Police Department.
For the City of Aurora.
For the City of Aurora.
Do solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Illinois.
And of the State of Illinois.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Deputy Chief.
Congratulations, sir. Let's give him a round of applause. Absolutely.
And now Deputy Chief.
Hold on, before, 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 I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Song. Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just inviting Deputy Chief to say a few words if he'd like.
Sure. First and foremost, I want to thank God for all the blessings that he has given myself and then throughout the years. We've truly been very fortunate and this is just another one of those blessings. So I'm truly thankful for that. I want to thank Mayor Irvin, the entire Aurora City Council and Chief Kristen Zeeman for your leadership, your dedication to our community and for having the faith in me and my abilities to appoint me to this position. I'm privileged and honored to be a part of this. I'd like to thank everyone at the Aurora Police Department, both civilian and sworn that I've worked with over the past 26 years. I've learned a lot from the people that I've worked for and I think it's made me a better police officer and a better person. Special thanks to the people I'm working with right now on the command staff, Commander Jack Ficto, Commander Mike Dorzapp, Commander Rick Robertson and Chief Kristen Zeeman. And I also want to give a special thanks to the aforementioned retired Deputy Chief Keith Jackson. He was a great boss. He was a great leader, someone that I'll miss. I know that the organization will miss, but I'm going to do my best to keep us moving in the right direction and follow the things that that he taught. I'd also like to thank retired officers Francis Shavel, Virgil Noe and Pete Enda, who were my training officers some 26 years ago. They provided me with a foundation for how to become a police officer and taught me a lot of things that have still stuck with me to this day. I've also been blessed to have worked for many great leaders throughout my 26 years. Just to mention a few, Chief Dave Stover was my first chief. A man I have tremendous respect for. Bill Powell, who's a great friend of mine and also a mentor of mine. Bill, he got me to to look at my life through a different perspective, from a different perspective, both professionally and personally. And I wouldn't be in this position without him. So I want to give him a thank you and tell him how much that meant to me. And also the person that I'm serving and my leader now, Chief Kristen Zeeman. She obviously needs no introduction unless you've been hiding under a rock or on a different planet. Her leadership skills are very well-known. She has great communication skills. She's a very strong person and she's a pleasure to work for. And it's a privilege and an honor to work for her. I also want to thank my friends, especially my best friends, Mark Maddox, Troy Davis, Liz Robinson Chan and Derek Smith, was the people that have I've known for over 20 years and have supported me and my family and everything that I've ever tried to do and have supported me in good and bad times. And I want them to know how much I appreciate that. And last, I want to thank my family, my extended family, my siblings, especially my mother and father, who sacrificed a lot, especially when I was growing up, to try and provide me with the things that I needed in order to make my dreams a reality. And I could never give them or repay them for the things that they've given me. But I want them to know how much I love them and how much I appreciate the things that they've done for me throughout my life. And the two people that you see sitting beside me, my my beautiful wife and my son, words really can't do justice how I feel about them. They are, you know, what I live for. They've been very supportive of me throughout, you know, the last over 20-plus years. They love me unconditionally. They have understood when I couldn't make events and different things because of my schedule and have always encouraged me to do better and have just been an inspiration to me. And I thank God that they are in my life. And lastly, I just would like to say that I'm excited for this opportunity. I'm excited to start my new position. And I look forward to working with the community members and members of city government to continue to move the city forward and make it second to none. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll have a more formal ceremony when we get past the COVID stay-at-home order. So all the aldermen can be in a position to congratulate personally. Congratulate now Deputy Deputy Chief Cross. Ms. Stallings, can we go on to the next item on the list?
Yes, 20-0251, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Dave McCabe as Deputy Fire Chief for the City of Aurora, Illinois.
Oh.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns.
Second.
Second by Alderman Franco. Before we go on, Ms. Lewis, you want to introduce our candidate? You're on mute, Ms. Lewis.
Okay. Yes, again, we are losing another long-term city vet in our fire department. John Gilbert, current Deputy Fire Chief, will be retiring May 9. And so we're asking council to approve the appointment for John McCabe to the position of Deputy Fire Chief. He has been, excuse me, with the city for 23 years. He currently serves as the Assistant Chief in the Fire Department, serving under the leadership of Chief Gary Kreenitz. And again, we know he'll do an outstanding job with the city and in his role. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Alderman Garza, you're on mute.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Alderman O'Connor, you're on mute.
No, I don't think so.
Oh, you, did you go ahead? Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
12As.
All right, motion carries, the resolution is approved. Let's give them a round of applause. Brother McKay. I don't, I I don't have, haven't had the pleasure of meeting your family as of yet, Dave, or Deputy Chief. Can you introduce them for us?
I sure can. My wife Megan is behind me. Unfortunately, we are socially distancing as we have been for the last six weeks because of some medical issues she has. We've been keeping our distance.
Absolutely.
My daughters Maggie and Shailen are here. And unfortunately, my son is Connor is at work right now, so you cannot.
Okay, Ms. Stallings?
Deputy Chief McCabe, will you raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Dave McCabe.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As Deputy Chief of the Aurora Fire Department.
As Deputy Chief of the Aurora Fire Department.
For the City of Aurora.
For the City of Aurora.
Do solemnly affirm.
You solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Illinois.
And of the State of Illinois.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
And if you would like to say a few words?
Sure, I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor, city staff, council, Fire Chief Gary Kreenitz for having the faith in me to assume the position of Deputy Chief for the Fire Department. A little over 23 years ago, I sat wide-eyed in the training room at Central Station as I began as a recruit for the Aurora Fire Department. I remember looking up at the white-shirted chief officers in awe. And as I worked as a firefighter, paramedic, company officer, battalion chief in the Training Division, most recently as Assistant Chief, I've always tried to do the right thing. I know that if I'm always trying to do the right thing and doing it for the right reasons, that things will turn out right. I want to be able to retire from the Fire Department one day and remember for the positive contributions I've made to the department, the city and to the fire service. I need to thank my family, my wife Megan, my daughters Maggie and Shailen, and my son Connor, who's currently at work and can't be here. There's been a lot of stress lately with the fight against COVID-19 that we are all fighting. And at times, I know I've not been the most patient or personal person when I get home. I want to apologize to them for that and thank them for their unwavering support. I want to thank my parents, Chuck and Rita, my sister Sharon, as well as my extended family and friends who have always, I hope, believed in me, even when I might not have believed in myself. Lastly, I want to thank the men and women of the Aurora Fire Department, including the administrative staff. They are truly the best in the business and I'm honored to serve with them every day, especially as they continue to respond to calls throughout this pandemic. When I started as a recruit along with Chief Kreenitz, Assistant Chief Strong was the training chief. And he told us as young recruits to make sure that we lead the department better than it was when we founded. I try to remember that every day. Once again, I want to thank Chief Kreenitz, the mayor, the city council for their support.
Thank you, sir. The same, council, that we'll have a more formal ceremony as we get past the stay-at-home order. So you can all personally congratulate Dave McCabe, the new Deputy Chief of the Fire Department. Thank you both Deputy Chiefs, and we appreciate your service to the City of Aurora.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go on to the rest of the agenda. Pub comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to the public hearing portion. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for item number 20-0263, Public Hearing on a Proposed Establishment of a Special Use Plan Development and a Proposed Plan Description for the Glazer Corporation for the property located at 1165 North Lake Street, the Glazer Project LLC. March. Hold on just one second. I'm going to go through, I have to read a lot. Though there's not going to be motion on the floor just yet. I'm reading the public hearing information. And I'll, I'll, I'll let the alderman know when we get to the point where there's a motion on the floor. But for the record, city council is holding this public hearing pursuant to Section 2-82 of our city ordinance and is being held via web conference as permitted by Section 6 of the Governor's Executive Order 2020-07. For the record, I'd like to ask the applicant if there is any objection to this hearing being held in front of city council via web conference? If the applicant has an objection or is present and would like to make objection?
And Mr. Anderson, that's Daniel Abdo. I believe he'll have to be unmuted.
I'm unmuted. I'm here.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Is there any objection, sir?
No, there's not.
Thank you. And for the record, the applicant has signed an affidavit acknowledging that this hearing occurring via web conference is in front of the city council. We will now begin the public hearing with a presentation by staff on this item. Staff? Assume this will be Ed.
Yeah, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
That's even a speaking area.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I'll give a brief background of the proposed development and just some brief discussion and then if there's any questions prior to turning it over to the developer. So this property is located in Ward 6 at 1165 North Lake Street. This is just south of the White Castle, just south of, let me put on my video here. Thank you, just south of the White Castle and south of Indian Trail. The subject property consists of a vacant Long John Silver's Restaurant that has been closed for a number of years and the property is zoned B to general retail. The petitioner is requesting the establishment of a special use plan development. The proposed plan description does vary. The front and rear setback regulations to allow the redevelopment. The plan description also permits a restaurant with a drive-through by right for the property. Concurrently with this proposal, which you'll see, which will be on your agenda at the next meeting, they're requesting approval of a final plan, which is essentially the site plan for the property to construct a 7,950-square-foot multi-tenant retail commercial building. And we can pull up the, we have the site plan. We can pull that up. Tracy's going to pull that up here. There's the the landscape plan showing the redevelopment on the site as I go through it. Again, the property currently consists of the vacant restaurant. That restaurant was built in 1982 and the site currently has no setbacks and very little landscaping. And it's been vacant and in a deteriorating condition. This new retail building will be This new retail building will be anchored by a national coffee company with drive-through. That'll take up about 2,400 square foot. You can see it kind of outlined at the north end of the, the proposed building there. And then there'll be an additional 5,500 square foot of retail in the rest of the building. The building will be 100% masonry. Again, the entire site will be reconstructed with a new landscape setback of almost 10 feet along Lake Street. Currently, it is at zero feet. There'll also be a new monument sign replacing the current old pole sign that is on the site. The plan also proposes construction of 43 parking spaces, which meet the zoning requirements for this use. There's currently two access drives onto Lake Street. The northerly access drive will be removed, and you will just have the one access, as you see on the site plan, that lines up directly with Old Indian Trail on the other side of Lake Street. The layout also provides plenty of vehicle stacking for the drive-through. It does meet our zoning standards. And there'll be a new five-foot, six-inch-wide sidewalk constructed along the front of the property. And just finally, some just discussion items. Again, this property was developed previously as a restaurant with a drive-through, so adding the drive-through as an additional permitted use should not have any negative impact to the area. And as you can see by what's happening currently in the, the area, that drive-throughs are quite an asset. Even though the setback does not meet the required 30-foot, the proposed plan is enlarging the current setback from zero to almost 10 feet along Lake Street. In addition, the removal of the northerly access point to Lake Street should help control traffic congestion and traffic pattern here. Again, the new, this new retail development will help with the redevelopment of North Lake Street. And it will help beautify the corridor and help stimulate other redevelopment along the North Lake Street corridor, which is a major gateway into the city. That is the presentation. If there's any questions for, for me as staff?
Hold on one second. We'll get to that in just one second. Do you have a copy of the notice for publishing that you want to present?
Yes, we'll let us pull that up here in one second. Tracy's pulling that up here in just one second. Yeah. Yes. Okay. Okay, can you pull it up on the screen? No.
You just want to hold it up, brother?
It's pulling up.
Okay.
Technology. It is, it is in the, the packet that was submitted to everyone.
We'll tell you what, while we wait to see if, you know, that's going to, we're going to be able to present that to council at this particular time, even though it's in their packets. Does council have any questions of staff at this time? Alderman Messiakos.
I don't know if it's staff more than the petitioner. Is petitioner comfortable talking about which national coffee chain is coming in at this moment?
Hi, this is Dan Abdo from Glazer. How is everyone? I wanted to answer that question. So we're not, we, we sign an agreement not to really say who it is until everything is finalized. I can, all I can say is we've done quite a bit of work with them over the years and sort of have a process in place, and we're moving it through the channels to get all of our documents signed, including leases and whatnot. But we're just typically not at liberty to say the exact name until that's all finalized, but we're close. So as soon as we can, I'll let Tracy know and, and, and we can go from there.
All right. Thank you, sir, Mr. Abdo.
The public notice is up now.
All right, so everybody is aware and season, aware of the public notice that was put in, in the Beacon News Chicago Tribune? Thank you very much. You can take that down. Does the council have any questions for the staff or for the applicant at this time? Any additional questions? Alderman Bug?
Yes, Mr. Seavey, you said that the, the stacking was met, met the minimums for the city. Can you elaborate on what the minimum requirements are for stacking for the city and that type of drive-through?
Yeah, I've got it here. The, the minimum stacking is typically, we look at a minimum of 10. We try to break that up, so it's five at the menu board and then five at the window, but we do require a minimum of 10, which they do meet.
Okay.
Any other aldermen have any questions?
Ms. Mayor?
Alderman, Alderman Hartburns?
I move to close the public hearing.
Well, there's a few more things we've got to go through before we get to that point, but I will call on you to close as soon as we get there. Any other questions from the alderman about this development? All right, now, would the applicant like to make a statement?
We have been around for 20-something years.
Before you, before you make that, clerk, do you want to swear the applicant in?
Yes, can you state your name, sir?
Sure, Daniel Abdo.
Yeah, what is your address?
1406 West Fulton, Suite A2, Chicago, Illinois, 60607.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth? So help you God.
Yes, yes, I do.
All right, sir, can proceed.
Sure, so Glazer Corporation, of which I'm a partner, has been developing small shop retail in and around the Chicago area for 20, oh, maybe even longer, 25 years. And we do have a website, which you're all welcome to take a look at. We typically deal with most national tenants to anchor our shopping centers. And we're excited to bring a nice project to the community, and it's been wonderful working with Tracy and, and her team. There's a lot that went into preparing this, as you guys know, so I don't know that I would have been able to do all of it without her help so quickly. So thanks to her, and, and we're excited to be here. So I'm looking forward to it. So if anybody has any questions, I'm always available.
Any additional questions for Mr. Abdo? Alderman Bug?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a follow-up on the, the stacking issue on coffee establishments, of course, in our neighboring cities, both to the east and to the southwest, they have some large coffee establishments where they've had some issues with some of their drive-through stacking. Of course, Lake Street being very important to our city, we want to make sure that we don't have those types of issues. So I guess this could be for the petitioner and for Mr. Seavey. If we get over our usual numbers of 10, where would the continued drive-through line, where the, where the continued stacking be? And I say this, of course, we're in unusual times right now. One of those establishments, my wife was in line two days ago, they had 22 cars stacked in their drive-through to get coffee. So these are not usual times, but certainly, these coffee establishments become very, very popular. And I think we need to have a plan if it does have those types of numbers.
Mr. Seavey?
Yes, Mr. Alderman Bug, there is over 10 in the dedicated drive-through lane. If there was any more than that, they would, if you recall the site plan, they'd be able to queue into the, the parking aisle. That is not the main parking aisle. That is on the side of the building. That would be that, that south drive aisle there. They would just have to somewhat back up into that. But the main parking for the center would be in the front of the building along Lake Street. So, but would not, they would, should not back up into Lake Street.
Thank you.
Fortunately, we're entering the drive-through lane at the rear part, so as, as was mentioned already, that you would stack into the, into the secondary parking on the south end of the site. So we're about as far away, fortunately, we're about as far away from Lake Street as we can be entering the drive-through lane, which is a good thing, so.
Thank you, again.
Thank you, Alderman Bug. Any other aldermen? Any questions? We can go ahead and close that, that item out.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Donnell.
I got to ask the developer, what is his timeline for developing of this property?
As soon as we're approved and we have permits. So as we get through this process, there's a point at which I think approval process, there's a point where we'll start, we'll, we'll start permit plans. In fact, most of the civvles have been complete already. My civil engineer has been working with the village directly on civvles, so we're pretty close to there on that. I'll finish up architecturals at some point and submit for permit as we get to a timeframe a little further down in the approval process. And we're going to go ahead and submit while we're getting final approvals, assuming everybody's, you know, good with the project. Once permits are issued, I'll have to get a, finalize some waivers with the tenant once our permits are issued from the village, and then we can start construction. So we're, we're looking to start as soon as we have permits and all approvals.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Hopefully this year.
Any additional questions from the alderman?
Ms. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
There being no further questions, I want to do a little cleanup. Let the record reflect that the applicant, Mr. Abdo, has submitted an affidavit. Not only did he swear in on video today before, she's also submitted an affidavit in writing testifying that he would tell the truth in this hearing. If there are no further questions, we will now continue on to the public participation portion of the hearing whereby members of the public are encouraged to participate. All individuals wishing to speak will be sworn in before they, their participation. Madam clerk, do we have any individuals wishing to offer, wishing to participate today?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, although we don't appear to have any additional public participation, we are going to keep this hearing open until next city council meeting to ensure that everyone who wishes to participate has an opportunity. We will reconvene this hearing at our next council meeting on May 12th. There's been a motion to adjourn this meeting by Alderman Hartburns. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you wouldn't want to adjourn if you're going to be continuing the hearing, so.
Got you, so we're just going to continue.
Motion to continue.
Without objection, without objection, you can just continue it.
Is there any objection to continuing this item to May 12? There being no objection, we'll continue that item. All right, let's go on to new business. For all items under new business this evening, the title of each item will be read in full. After each item, I will ask if there are any questions on the item. If there are questions, the alderman will have the opportunity to ask questions at that time. Once everyone has had a chance to ask questions, I will ask whether there is unanimous consent to move the item to the consent agenda portion of this meeting. If there are no objections to moving the item to the consent agenda, the clerk will place the item on tonight's consent agenda. If any alderman objects to placing an item on the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the item, and council will proceed to deliberate on the matter and vote on it in the ordinary course of business. Madam clerk, can you read the first item under new business?
20-0048, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a cannabis dispensing facility to 1115 use on the property located at 35 North Broadway.
So.
All right, so there's been a motion on this. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman, Alderman Jenkins, second by Alderman Franco. Before we entertain that motion, are there any questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Yamas?
I'll have to abstain from this due to professional conflict.
Alderman Yamas, let, let the, let the record reflect that Alderman Yamas, based on professional conflict, will abstain from this? Are there any?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Jenkins, Alderman Jenkins, but actually, before, you got questions? Alderman Jenkins, do you have any question?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement. This project was brought before the building and Development Committee. And we had held it, this was prior to the cannabis outbreak, cannabis COVID outbreak. Cannabis outbreak has been a long time, but anyway.
Your mind is that, brother? What have you been doing these last 45 days?
Hey, whatever helps, but anyway. And we had held it, but I had an opportunity to talk to the legal counsel with the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity regarding the social equity aspect of this. And they were able to provide me with some information as well as our staff. And so I am in full favor of moving this forward. I know that I've had opportunity to talk to the, the co-owner as well as talk to some of the business owners around the site, and they are in favor of it. Looks like this, this organization would be a great addition to the business community in our downtown, so I would be voting in favor of this.
Any other questions, comments? All right, I'm gonna ask Alderman Jenkins that you withdraw your motion and, and also, Alderman Garza, do you have a question?
Yes, a question I have. So finally, the hours, because we found some businesses before, they have some kind of concern for the parking. So we find an extra parking across the street from West Side Cross. I don't know what is the total of parking spaces in there, but they are happy with that, but they need to know what is the hours they want to be.
Does anybody have, anybody from staff have that information as to what the hours might be for this establishment if?
Yeah, the concern is for, for some issues with the parking in there.
Okay. Anybody from?
Yes, this is.
Alderman, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is Tracy Basick. The hours are going to be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So they, they are following our regulations that were set forth in the ordinance.
And it just.
8:00 AM?
Correct. They can, or the hours can be no longer than 8:00 AM or earlier than 8:00 AM and no later than 10:00 PM.
Now, Ms. Basick, that's not suggesting that those are going to be their hours. That's just the hours they have available to be open. Is that correct?
I believe that is what they told us that their hours are going to be. The petitioner is on the line if he can speak to that, Pete, I believe.
What is Pete? Hold on one second, Alderman Garza, hold on one second. Mr. Stazoni?
Yes.
The question was, what would your hours of operations be if you are, if you do actually receive a license and open at that location?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We intend to open at 8:00 AM and operate for 14 hours, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Which days of the week?
Seven days a week.
Okay. All right, now, the, one of the issues also, thank you, Mr. Stazoni, issues are parking. Do we still have, I see Ken Troth on the line. Ken, can you unmute for me for one second? Ken Troth? Ken, Ken, our good, Ken, can you talk a little bit about the new parking that was built back there on the east of, of Broadway, behind that location?
Yes, actually, so this parcel doesn't have any actual curb cuts on either of our major arterials, but it does, it's now blessed with three access points to the new parking lot that we built this year. Two on New York Street and one on Galena, so it's completely revamped. And then we also have the parking lot across the street at the fire museum as well. It's a public parking lot, so we hope to do some additional landscaping this year, depending upon funding, but the, all the parking is now available.
Alderman Garza, any additional questions?
How many additional parking have?
What's the total number of parking spots we have in that location now, Ken?
I do not have that with me right now, I'm sorry. I can get back to you on that, but my understanding with, what I do recall is that the parking was pretty similar to what it was prior to our start of the project. We might have lost a couple due to landscaping, but it's pretty much the same as it was.
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's 111.
111 spots, Mrs.? One hundred and eleven spots. Mr. Stazoni said, do you agree with that, Mr. Steven? Mr. Ed Steven?
Yeah, yes, uh, there's a hundred and eleven, I believe, in parking lot E.
Gotcha. All right, one hundred and eleven spots. Alderman Garza.
Yeah, yeah, because, yeah, the concern is what they have because normally the businesses in there, they close at six PM. So after six PM is no problem. But in the early hours, uh, probably going to be some kind of concerns for the parking. Uh, eight AM, seven days a week. In a close up ten, uh, I think going to be very hard for the businesses in, on Broadway.
Mr. Schroth, can, there's additional parking actually on Broadway, is that correct?
The, there is parking available on Broadway, but then I guess the way we're looking at this too is that we've got, it's like any other downtown business that we've got ample sidewalks that serve multiple parking stalls throughout the downtown. So, um, it's not just what's in the close proximity, but, um, we do have many other spaces within, within a half mile, quarter mile walk.
Mayor, I think that the, uh, Peter can, um, speak a little bit more about this, also the petitioner.
Mr. Stazoni? Is, is to parking?
Yes, you know, on, on the parking, um, it is something that I do know is a concern to the downtown businesses. And, uh, we've reached out to, uh, some of the downtown businesses, uh, to discuss this one-on-one, to relay their concerns. But as far as parking goes, lot E, which is, you know, directly behind, uh, the, the property, with, first of all, to alleviate the parking, um, issue for the surrounding merchants. First of all, we will not have any employees park in that parking lot. And secondly, we will also, on our website, be directing our customers and we will have information in the display area and our security people to direct folks not to be parking, um, in lot F next to La Quinta. I'm sorry, lot N next to La Quinta. Uh, we will certainly enforce, uh, that our customers stay away from that parking lot at all times. And also to avoid lot F along the, uh, Fox River. Because it's used, uh, by the Paramount Theater and others. And that we're also have a letter of intent, um, to, um, lease parking spaces from, uh, the Dullin Murphy Parking Lot, which is addressed adjacent to the, uh, uh, train station parking lot in New York. They'll provide at least fifty spaces. So we, we think that we can alleviate a lot of the concerns and the parking issues during the peak times by, uh, utilizing the Dullin Murphy Parking Lot and avoiding our employees from using lot E and directing both, uh, through, um, flyers that we'll have for customers and our website to avoid part, you know, not only parking lots F and M, but also to, uh, utilize the, the private parking lot and others to be aware of the surrounding merchants. I, I have worked with, uh, some other cities, um, for nonprofits with festivals, knowing that, uh, surrounding merchants are very concerned about parking. It's very simple, the topic and, and, uh, we intend to, um, work with the, uh, merchants that would be affected in the parking. So out of the two hundred and seventy-nine, uh, public spaces, you know, not utilizing N or F and, uh, directing people during peak times away from E, I think there'll be significant or substantial parking, uh, for our customers that should have minimal impact on the surrounding businesses.
Any additional questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Peter, to understand this because I know, um, if you advertisement and, um, the parking, the lot E is good because the, right there on Broadway is, um, the restaurant and there's beauty salons, so they need, normally they park it in the back of the building. So it's good if you let us know to use the lot E. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Jenkins.
Uh, one of the things I want to point out is that as, uh, these additional locations, these cannabis locations open up, we're talking about this one, the one at Farnsworth and one on Route fifty-nine. You know, the demand, when you don't have a number of these places open up is going to be great, but as more open up, they, what we were seeing, have been seeing up in North Aurora is going to diminish. And so I think over the period of time, uh, it's going to work out well for everyone. It's going to work out well from the standpoint of as people come down and experience our great downtown. It's just going to be, you know, more opportunities for all of our businesses there. So, uh, I just want to, uh, just bring that to everyone's attention.
Any additional questions? Any Alderman?
No.
With no additional questions and a, being a motion and a second on the floor, clerk, will you please call the rule?
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hart Burns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Loffy?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
No.
Ten A's, one N A, one abstention.
All right, um, the motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Clerk, can you read the next item under new business?
Twenty dash zero zero nine four, a resolution requesting approval of a three-year maintenance agreement with C D W D G Corporation of Vernon Hills, Illinois, under the National IPA Purchasing Agreement Contract Number two zero one eight zero one one dash zero one for an annual amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for the city's storage area network, SAN, which is a total amount of one hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars for the three years.
Hold on a second. Before I entertain a motion and a second, before we entertain that at all, I'm going to ask for questions first this time. Does anyone have any questions on this particular item, Alderman Franco?
Well, not on this particular item, but on the process. Did, did you not say that we're looking at the new businesses to put them on the consent agenda?
Yes, but I, the la, yes, just let me back up for a second, yes. That's why I asked for questions first for this, when the last one I didn't ask, because I knew that not everybody was going to be agreeing with that. So I didn't even ask the question.
So did that go on the consent agenda, or do we pass that ordinance via a vote?
We just passed it via vote and you said yes.
Oh, no, that's fine. I just, I'm just trying to get the, the difference between going to consent and actually approving it at this time. Okay.
Gotcha. So I'm, so I'm, let me get back on track. I did not entertain a motion and a second, so I'm going to ask if there are any questions on this particular item. There being no questions, is there any objection, um, from the council to putting this on the consent agenda? There being no questions, um, will the clerk please place this item on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Can you read the next item?
Twenty dash zero one four zero, an ordinance amending chapter two, article five, division five of the city code of the City of Aurora titled Local Preference in Contracts.
So move.
Before we take a motion and a second, are there any questions on that? Jessica, matter of fact, let's do a quick presentation. Either Mr. Veenstra or, uh, Ms. Kalal, can you just tell what this, what this is?
Sure, so I can go ahead and explain it. So this is, um, an ordinance amending chapter two. Let me get on video two, chapter two, article five, division five of the city code entitled Local Preference in Contracts. And what this ordinance does, it just makes a few revisions, um, so that now we're setting a five percent percentage. For, basically, so we already had an existing local preference ordinance and what this does is it says that if the lowest responsible bidder is not a local business, we're going to give, if there's a local business that submitted a bid for the project and they're within five percent of the lowest non-local business, they're going to be given a chance to match the lowest bid. And so the ordinance now will have, um, if approved, a table that shows the percentage amount is for contracts between twenty-five thousand and one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And the preference percentage is five thousand. And so again, what this does is if we have a contract that fits in that price range and the lowest responsible bidder is a non-local business and a business that fits within the percentage, we will give the local business a chance to price match the lowest bid. And the reason for this amendment is just to encourage our local businesses to submit bids, for project, for city projects and to give them a chance to price match.
So just to be clear, we don't pay a higher amount to the local bidder within five, um, percent. They have to go down to the lowest bid, so the City of Aurora loses absolutely no money on this, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor, and that's the fundamental change to this amendment to the ordinance is that now they would be required to come down and price match where that was not in the ordinance before.
Are there any questions? On this? Alderman Masiacos?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a clarification in this word document. On page two, paragraph C, you're striking out or receive the opportunity to price match as applicable.
I think that's just how the, it's reworded, I think.
Better, I just?
Yeah, that was really a not, a not, a non-substantial removal from the ordinance.
All right.
The price match provision is described, um, in sub-paragraph B above. So that portion didn't really fit in subsection C. So at some point, that language was in there under ties. But that was removed so that the language about price matching is only in par, sub-paragraph B.
All right, just want to make sure there's not contradiction.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Our comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Alderman Jenkins?
Okay, so it says contracts between twenty-five thousand and is that supposed to be one point nine mil?
Yes, so the new, so the, the new chart says between twenty-five thousand and one, one million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other que, is Alderman Yamas, did you have a question? Any other questions? No. With no further questions, is there an objection to putting this on the consent agenda? With no objection from the Alderman, clerk, will you please place this item on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Um, will you read the next item under new business, clerk?
Twenty dash zero one four eight, a resolution requesting approval for a three-year software maintenance agreement with Zen City Technologies, U S Incorporated for the Zen City platform in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, which will be paid annually in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars.
So move.
All right, before we entertain a motion and a second, I'm going to ask if, um, Mr. Piggies from IT give a, uh, just a brief presentation on what this is. Michael Piggies?
Yes, that, yeah, absolutely, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, uh, city council. So this is a annual subscription-based renewal over the next thirty-six months. The initial one-year contract started back in, in January of twenty nineteen. It's for the Zen City platform, which actually collects data and helps us to, um, to gain real-time insights about citizen interactions from various different sources, multimedia sources, and analyzes that real-time data, uh, using different machine learning, uh, algorithms. That information is basically assessed by the mayor's office, um, the Alderman's office, the PIO, and also Public Safety to basically gain insights using different interactions in, in terms of, uh, sentiment analysis across the city. It provides an analysis in terms of what are those pressing topics or concerns within our, uh, community and provides the insights to city council for additional analysis. Um, this is a critical communications platform that, you know, that enables the city to engage our citizens effectively and also keep our finger on the pulse in terms of those community topics and concerns in response to, um, strategic planning.
Based on the COVID, um, crisis that we're dealing in, uh, did they, um, hold off when payment would be, uh, would be available, would be needed to be paid?
Uh, Mayor, we did actually speak, uh, directly with, uh, the Zen City with the CEO and he did, uh, he was actually open to defer in payment, um, until January of twenty twenty-one.
Any additional questions from the Alderman?
I have a question.
Alderman Loffy?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's great, uh, that we have it, but, uh, you said you've had it for a year and you used it to analyze and gain insights, but my question is, is this really something that we really need to do right now based on our financial situation? Can we hold off on, you know, till next year to use it or get something else that's a little less expensive? Forty-eight thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Well, based on our RFQ process, uh, this was the best, um, solution based on the requirements. Uh, I guess I would, uh, I actually turned that question back around to the mayor's office and also the Alderman's office since, um, you are the biggest users of this platform.
I know many Aldermen use, use this to get the pulse on what's going on citywide and as well as in their ward. And to answer Alderman Loffy's question that we, we need, uh, software like this now more than ever, especially during our, this COVID crisis where we need to be constantly communicating with our constituency to find out what the issues are that we need to address throughout our city. I mean, we need it more than now, now than ever. So the fact that we've had it for last year and the last year and know how it works and see how effective it's been, and I know a lot of Aldermen have used the, uh, the data from, from, uh, this technology that, uh, you know, this is critical to be in contact with our, with our, with our people. Now, is there any Aldermen that have used it and see the value of it, Alderman Franco?
Yeah, I saw when the, we were talking about the recreational cannabis situation last fall. It was very helpful to find out what was going on citywide. And now I would say it might be more important because I know personally, I'm not having neighborhood meetings where I have the dialogue back and forth about various topics. So I kind of want to know what's happening out there when I can't meet with my constituents one-on-one. So I thought it was valuable before. It might be even more valuable as we go forward.
And Alderman Loffy, and I, Alderman Smith, did you have a? Nope. All right, Alderman Loffy, I, that was also, Alderman Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, ju, just to, um, reiterate what Alderman Franco said, I found it extremely helpful during the time when we were, um, working on whether we would bring the cannabis to Aurora or not, because we had so many people speaking at our meetings that really weren't Auroraans and, um, this gave me the opportunity to really get the pulse on my community specifically. So I found it to be at that particular time extremely helpful.
And, and Alderman Jenkins?
Yeah, I think also you want, uh, I think we can also add that this, uh, puts us in a better position going forward. You know, after this pandemic, uh, it's, it's, it's what is being reported in the news and the media that there could be others that's coming down and, and to know a type of software like this is available and we're using it that, uh, it allows us to be able to know the movements, uh, within the, out of the city in terms of everyone is looking at social distancing. This software is something that we can't say, okay, we've got to put this to the back burner. This is something we need right now. This is the new industry. This is something that's going to help us. And, uh, I, I think we've got to, we've got to continue to move ahead on this. And I think, uh, the company is willing to work with us, but I think irregardless of that, this is too important. It's been very useful and very helpful. And there's more that this software is going to be able to do, and we need to make sure we are taking advantage of.
I will say that based on our financial circumstance, Alderman Loffy does have a legitimate question in asking about that, uh, amount of money being spent, which is exactly why we asked Mr. Piggies to go back to, um, to the owner and the CEO, the company, to find out if we could put off payment. And they said put out payment for till twenty twenty-one, which helps substantially. Mr. Lyons?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. When I first saw this about a week or two ago, I was right where Alderman Loffy was, that really this is, uh, you know, sometimes esoteric and, and, oh, it, it shows trends. But I can tell you from what, uh, many communities had to do in two thousand and nine during the recession, trying to gauge citizen response over ideas, uh, and, and how we, uh, run the community over the next year. When we go into the twenty twenty-one budget process, I will definitely want to know what is coming up, um, back as feedback. If, for instance, we say we're considering changing, um, our garbage collection because we want to do something that's, uh, less costly. I'd want to know what the feedback was on that, not just if we hold a public hearing or if we hold a meeting. What's the chatter? And, and there's going to be a lot of those kinds of things where we put budget items out there to say, what if we don't? what if we don't do this or we do that? We'll want to know that data. So I, I've kind of come around to saying that it's a worthwhile expense for long term financial planning.
And, you know, to follow up with um, Alderman Franco, not to, you know, belabor the, the issue with the fact that there we're hearing from our health officials that there may not be a vaccine or any mitigating uh, cure medication to address the seriousness of COVID nineteen. We may not be meeting with constituency, our constituencies in, in large numbers so we can gauge and ask them. So this is perfect opportunity for, for us to use technology, which in this day and age, that's where we're going, technology to gain data and evidence so we can make the right decisions on behalf of all the citizens for the city of Aurora. Any other questions from any other Alderman or comments? Do you have any other questions, Alderman Loftie?
No, but I think it would be helpful to have some additional training on it if it's really that great. I didn't know it was that great that I would like to see if uh, IT department could give us some additional training.
Did you, uh, and I know this is a little off subject a little bit, Mr. Piggies, but did you ever, did we offer trainee the alderman on this particular? Uh, you did. So I see Alderman Smith nodding his head. So you just got to, we'll just make sure that we uh, shoot you some options for, for training as well. All right, there's been questions. There's, there's no motions on the floor. Questions have been answered. Is there any objection to putting this item on the consent agenda? With no objection from the alderman clerk, can you put this item on the consent agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, can you read the next item on our new business?
Twenty dash zero two zero eight, a resolution authorizing a contract with W E Monday Landscaping and Garden Center Incorporated, eleven thirty five Mitchell Road, Suite one hundred, Aurora, Illinois, six oh five oh five, to extend the unit prices submitted for the citywide landscape repair and maintenance contract.
So move.
Well, before we um entertain a motion in a second, are there any questions on this or you guys been dealing with this for years? So the same, so does, does any of the aldermen object to putting this on the consent agenda? With no objection to putting this on the consent agenda, clerk, will you place this item on the consent agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, clerk, could you read the next item on a new business?
Twenty dash zero two one three, a resolution authorizing approval of professional services in the amount not to exceed of eighty nine thousand nine hundred eighty nine dollars to perform cyber remediation with eighteen ninety eight and company part of Burns and McDonald for the water treatment plant. A CADA system to enhance the security posture of critical infrastructure in the city of Aurora.
All right, before we entertain any, I know I'm throwing Alderman Heartburns off. Before we entertain any, any motion a second, um, and ask any questions, can we, is Dave Schumacher on the, on the line with us? Dave Schumacher?
Yes, I am.
Sir, can you give us a little background of what this is?
Uh, well, um, this is really sort of being managed by the IT department. So the water production division is kind of following their lead. But mainly, uh, this work will improve the security posture of the existing water treatment plant SCADA system. It's a supervisory control and data acquisition system. And so it kind of fits in along with the uh, city's general increasing of these cybersecurity postures for the, the citywide network. I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Piggis to comment um, if further.
Mr. Piggies?
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Um, actually, I'm going to pass it to Leela Karimori, who's our IT risk and compliance manager, just to give a, a, a quick update.
Leela? Mr. Karimori?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, this is, I'm requesting acceptance of this winning response. But R F U nineteen dash seventy seven cybersecurity for critical infrastructure, water treatment plan for cyber remediation. So all of you know that information technology is continuously working to include the cybersecurity through the city after the strategic plan is land launched in twenty nineteen. Now, we want to perform a cyber remediation for the city owned water treatment plant SCADA system. A cybersecurity, I just to add to this, a cybersecurity assessment was performed and report was issued in uh, December twenty eighteen. Now, this is the time to implement the plan and remediate the high and medium findings in the first place. I'm considering existing cybersecurity threats, especially in this COVID pandemic period. The IT security in collaboration with water treatment plant is responsible for reducing and mitigating the cyber risk in the city of Aurora. So these efforts will definitely help facilitate enhanced control and proactive IT risk management measures and critical water infrastructure with city of Aurora.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any, are there any questions based on the presentations from Ms. Karimori or Mr. Schumacher? All right, there being no questions, is there any objection from the alderman to putting this on the consent agenda? There being no objections, clerk, will you place this item on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Clerk, will you read the next item on a new business?
Twenty dash zero two one eight, a resolution requesting approval for contract amendment on approved resolution nineteen dash one seven five, dated June eleven, twenty nineteen for IT risk assessment, Data Defenders LLC Corporate Headquarters, one eleven West Jackson Boulevard, Suite seventeen hundred, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh four, in the amount not to exceed one hundred thirty seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Cause before, before we entertain any emotions or second, I'm going to ask uh, if Ms. Karim, uh, Karim Murray would give a a quick presentation on what this is.
I'll actually take this one.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Right. So, yeah, due to the, to the most recent uh, the COVID nineteen outbreaks and also prior to this, um, due to many attacks across the nation, for example, in New, in New Orleans, Pensacola, Baltimore, we had planned to actually to enhance specific capabilities here in the city of Aurora. One was our disaster recovery plan and business continuity plan. This was one component that we had. We had a requirement to actually to upgrade within our COOP, our continuity of operations plan. And that's, we want to make sure that that business plan is defined um, in case of a disaster. So we can recover in order to main business continuity for, for the organization. The other aspect is basically doing what we call a penetr- a penetration test on our web applications. We want to make sure that those web applications here within the city have been assessed and any vulnerabilities have been remediated. We're trying to keep out the bad actors. Um, so those are the two main uh, areas of focus that we're um, uh, looking at to make sure that our security posture is tight. And again, this is part of the overall cybersecurity program for the city to make sure that we're in a state where we have a reduced threat and a footprints from any potential hackers.
Thank you, sir. Do, do we have any questions from the alderman? Any questions? There are no questions. Is there any objections to placing this item? I'm sorry, Alderman Yamas, did you have a question? No. Is there any objection to placing this item on the consent agenda? With no objection, clerk, can you place this item on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Can you read the next item in our new business?
Uh, twenty dash zero two four nine, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class E City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Los Pancho's Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as Los Pancho's Restaurant, seven hundred East New York Street, Suite one eighty, Aurora, six oh five oh five.
Ms. Stallings, can you give a brief uh, synopsis of what this is?
Excuse me.
I'm, I'm sorry, Alderman Yamas?
Before Ms. Stallings begins, I'll have to abstain from this one too, due to a professional conflict.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Yamas, based on a professional conflict, is abstaining from this particular item. Ms. Stallings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we also have the um, the seller and the purchasers on the line if there are any specific questions for the parties involved, but um, as the memo stated, this is just a hundred percent transfer of ownership uh, via sale of the Pancho's Family Restaurant on New York Street. And they, they proposed to uh, name uh, it very similarly to Los Pancho's Restaurant. Pancho's Family Restaurant has maintained a classy liquor license for um, many years. And um, we're asking that upon this uh, the sale that the uh, license be issued to the new restaurant, Los Pancho's Restaurant. And if there are any questions, um, we can direct them to the parties.
Are there any questions from the alderman? Any questions? Alderman Seville, did you have a question? Just fixing your hair, just move, brother. With no questions from the alderman, is there any objection to placing this on?
Mr. Mayor, because, because Alderman Yamas is, is recused themselves for this, you may just want to take the roll call. So
That's fine.
We don't run it through the issue of consent.
That's fine. Um, i- is there a motion to approve this uh, this resolution, this uh, resolution? There's been a motion by Alderman Heartburns. Second by Alderman Bog. Um, are there any more questions or comments? With none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Garza? Yes. Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Heartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Loftie?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
All right, all right, uh, motion carries. The resolution is approved. Clerk, can you read the next item? Under new business?
Uh, twenty dash zero two five zero, a resolution authorizing the Green Power Partnership Agreement, a voluntary program of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, that assists organizations with procuring electricity generated from renewable sources and promoting their green power leadership.
All right, uh, Mr. Man- is Alex Manila?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, yes, thank you. Thank you very much for having me and thank you for bringing this forward before you tonight. Um, should you have any question, I would be more than happy to answer. This is a program that the city of Aurora would like to uh, bring forward simply because uh, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency no longer than two weeks ago has recognized that the uh, green initiatives, the green efforts, sustainability efforts that the city has put in place uh, twelve years. Aurora is recognized that region wide as being a sustainability leader and the EPA designated as a, as a green power community. Now, what the, what this partnership uh, means to Aurora is uh, basically putting us on a platform that can bring us a more more visibility and also will procure, will help us to procure green energy. If you all recall back in two thousand and nineteen, in October, last October, the city of Aurora approved the um an agreement with Progressive Energy Group for the consulting uh, to provide the green energy to Aurora. So this is just uh, an, an additional tool that the city can have to benchmark our uh, electricity production and consumption, reducing also CO2 emission, carbon dioxide, and also uh, further our efforts to demonstrate how green power can be further.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any, does the alderman have any questions? Any questions or comments? There being none, is there an objection to this item going on consent agenda? There being no objections, clerk, can you place this item on consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Can you read the next item under new business?
Item twenty dash zero two five two, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class C City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Aurora Spirit and Wine LLC, doing business as Aurora Spirit and Wine, sixteen sixty nine Montgomery Road, number one, Aurora, six oh five oh four.
Ms. Stallings, you want to give a little bit of background on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, this is a, uh, again, another business transfer. Uh, the purchaser is not able to be on the phone. However, the seller is on the phone if you have questions for him. Um, this is Class C package liquor licenses. AJ's Liquor has maintained a classy liquor license for several years at this location. AJ's Liquor is the seller. Aurora Spirit and Wine is the purchaser.
Any questions from the alderman? No questions or comments? Does any alderman have that, an objection to putting this item on the consent agenda? With no objection from the alderman, can clerk, can you put this item on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, can you read the next item on our new business?
Twenty dash zero two five three, a resolution approving an amendment to the existing lease between the city of Aurora and Subway for the property located at five East Downer Place, Aurora, Illinois, to allow for a fifty percent deferral on Subway's rent for the months of April and May twenty twenty due to COVID nineteen with a deferred rent to be paid back in twelve equal monthly installments from June first, twenty twenty through May thirty first, twenty twenty one.
Ms. Kalal or Mr. Vainster want to give a little backgrounds, quick background, we're doing this for this and other uh, city owned properties, is that correct?
So, um, this particular one is just for the Subway located at five East Downer Place. This is requesting approval of an amendment to the current lease between the city and Subway. They approached us asking for a fifty percent rent deferral um, for the months of April and May twenty twenty due to COVID nineteen. Um, the lease amendment requires them to repay the amount of rent that's been deferred in twelve equal, um, twelve monthly installments running from June first, twenty twenty to May thirty first of twenty twenty one.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from the alderman? No questions from the alderman. Is there any objection to this item being placed on consent? With no objection, clerk, can you please place this item on consent? Can you read the next item under new business court?
Twenty dash zero two five nine, a resolution awarding Langton Group Woodstock, Illinois, as the twenty twenty contractor for downtown mowing and landscape maintenance with the option for two one year extensions.
Mr. Schroth, can you give a little bit of a background on that?
Uh, yes, sir. Th- this is the uh, maintenance contract, very anxious to get going on for downtown. It's basically primarily mowing of uh, the right of ways downtown, parking lot, landscaping, um, uh, several locations, but this is a uh, uh, a, a one year contract with the extension to extend.
Thank you much. Are there any questions from the alderman? With no questions, is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Uh, Alderman Franco, did you have a question? No? All right. Uh, with no objections to this item being placed on the consent agenda, clerk, will you please place this item on consent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And read the next item under new business?
Twenty dash zero two six four, a resolution approving security reduction number one for Meadow Ridge subdivision.
Uh, Mr. Schroth?
Uh, yes, this is a subdivision located uh, near seventy fifth and Meadow Ridge. Uh, they've installed much of the public infrastructure to date and they're looking for a reduction. This is not an acceptance. It doesn't mean that we're accepting these improvements for perpetual maintenance. It's simply reducing the bond that they have with us, proving that they're going to build the infrastructure as, as permitted.
Thank you, sir. Does any alderman have a question or comment on this item? No question or comment? Are there any objections to placing this item on the consent agenda? With no objection, clerk, can you please place this item on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And read the final item under new business court.
Uh, twenty dash zero two six six, a resolution authorizing annual action plan substantial amendment twenty twenty, number one, to reallocate prior year resources, current year resources, upcoming supplemental twenty twenty community development block grant funding in response to the coronavirus pandemic and updates to the twenty twenty to twenty twenty four consolidated plan and citizen participation plan.
I'm going to ask for a motion on this item.
So move.
There's been a motion by Alderman Heartburns, second it by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Alderman Franco?
So when we're talking to staff earlier, um, I guess I want my question answered again, just to make sure I got this right. So we have a particular.
You, you, I'll tell you, hold that question for a second if you don't mind, because other aldermen have, um, Mr. D Board, Mr. Trevor, Mr. D, Trevor Dick. Can you uh, please give us a, a short uh, background on what we're doing here or Chris Rigona, whoever's on the line?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to take it to start out with uh, very quickly, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a couple of words uh, to put this all in context. Uh, the legislature item that is before you authorize this is a substantial amendment to the annual action plan relating to the community block grants or the CBDG. Discussion we're about to have due to time sensitivity in the context of the virus and its ramifications will focus much on what is essentially a subset of this legislature item, namely an initiative to help support our small businesses called the Stable Fund, standing together with Aurora Businesses Local Emergency Fund. standing together with Aurora Businesses Local Emergency Fund. The speakers that follow will discuss this in more detail, a couple of points. This program builds on existing programs that tailors the, and then tailors them to the issues at hand, getting critical dollars to small businesses. Aside from the passion, creativity and direction that we received from the mayor, Alex, Chuck and Marty, and of course Trevor Dick, who will speak next, a team of individuals and organizations came together in an unprecedented way to provide input, data and ideas and create a work product that led to the program being discussed tonight. This started with us all working together when we all tried to get the word out for the many programs, state, federal and private, to help our small businesses. And this includes Chris Rigona, our Community Development Manager, who helped get the ball rolling and tirelessly worked to get this ready for launch. Dr. Holloway, our Chief Innovation Officer, whose wide-reach knowledge and accessibility has been invaluable. Amy Monroe, who helped behind the scenes tailoring the program to the strict HUD guidelines. Also, we've got to mention our partners in Invest Aurora, led by Brian Gay, who has taken the lead on executing this plan, and his great team, Loretta Daly, John Motzma, who actually had the nerve to get married while we were trying to roll out the uh, plan, Chris Faber, um, and Alexis, uh, Alexamo. Um, I want to also, um, we're going to bring on Jessica Linder Gallo of the Aurora Regional Chamber of Commerce, and for all her hard work, and who also represented the Quad County African-American Chamber of Commerce and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I myself have tried to stay in touch with Aurora Downtown and let them know what was going on. Couple of final points, um, there is documentation that is still forthcoming, most notably the document related to the forgiveness, the, the forgivable loans and certain intramural agreements, and even the final application, which will come out uh, on Friday. Despite this, we moved ahead because we are planning and doing at the same time, while trying hard not to compromise the integrity, fairness and the efficiency of the program. We've tried very hard to learn and take the best aspects of the state and federal programs that have been rolled out, but to avoid the pitfalls, the well-publicized, publicized pitfalls of those programs. In summary, we have a strong program, program here, not a perfect one, but one that tries to be true to the intention of the mayor and the administration, and you, the Aldermen, and the older women, who have given us very valuable input that has influenced the final presentation. We have a consensus here from all of us in terms of helping the small business that we all hope to patronize in the months and years to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to turn it over. I think Brian Gay, you're, you're next to speak.
Mr. Gay, are you present?
Trevor, I think, is it Trevor, did you uh?
Yeah. Got a couple of words here, David.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Dick.
Okay, um, so thank you, David. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I just wanted to spend a few moments highlighting one key component of the uh, request for reallocation, which is the creation of a new program to help provide meaningful funds to the small local businesses throughout the city. In order to create the proposed program, staff were collaboratively, collaboratively, as David said, with many departments and agencies. And uh, one such component was working with Invest Aurora, who actually brought to the table an existing small business loan program that we used as a basis, which allowed us to move quickly. The proposed program, called the Stable Fund, will award forgivable loans for small businesses up to two funding categories. Businesses of one to five employees, which can receive up to fifteen thousand dollars, and businesses with six to fifty, that's five zero employees, which can receive up to twenty-five thousand. Staff is also recommending that funding come from the CDBG program. And I'll just quickly mention what that is for those of you who aren't familiar. That's the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's administered by the federal government through its HUD program. That program has been, been designed to provide annual grants on a formula basis to the City of Aurora, to provide decent housing and suitable living environments by expanding economic opportunities, principally for low and moderate income persons. It's important to note that these funds cannot be used for other city operational expenses, and because they are federally funded, there are certain parameters that both Brian and Chris will more fully describe shortly. Before I turn it over to Brian, I wanted to highlight some of the key discussion points, questions and proposed updates to the proposed program that have occurred since we started to discuss this last Thursday. The first question is, what are the funding sources? So as we've mentioned, uh, these are coming from the Community Development Block Grant Funds, totaling one point four million dollars. That is a breakdown of three hundred thousand from the new COVID nineteen funds, which is a third of the approximately nine hundred thousand we received, plus seven hundred thousand dollars of last year's twenty nineteen CDBG funds and four hundred thousand of this year's twenty twenty CDBG funds. I also wanted to make a mention to clarify something that's in your legislature memo. Uh, this is regarding the Hope Wall Playground. It has not been eliminated. The city is not the lead on that project, but is a contributor of funds. And we are working to find other non-general funds to participate in that playground project, along with School Districts one twenty-nine, one thirty-one and the Park District. Another question that we really spent a lot of time trying to answer internally as part of our team is, what businesses are eligible? Uh, a lot of discussions led us to making sure that we really define what a small local business is. As David said, we did, we wanted to escape those pitfalls from those other federal and state programs. So our definition of a local small business is a business that has less than fifty employees. And if that is part of a national chain, the applicant needs to show that they're a locally-owned franchise and not corporately-owned. Another question that has been asked is, how will businesses be selected? Chris is going to spend a few moments uh, talking in more detail about how the selection process is been created. But from a high-level point of view, what we tried to do is create a program, a program that gave all eligible businesses an equal chance throughout the entire city. We wanted to make sure that every business had an equal chance. There is a special set aside that is going to be given for businesses within the HUD-approved and defined NRS A area, which is basically a down, the downtown area, and it's been expanded to include more of the surrounding areas. This is a HUD-defined area, and it made a lot of sense for us to uh, give a set aside to allow opportunities for up to fifty percent of the funds earmarked for those businesses. I think it's important to note that those businesses selected, um, if those downtown businesses that are selected make up less than the fifty percent, that those remaining funds will go back into the larger pool. And so that way, the downtown businesses won't quote-unquote be able to get into two different programs. They would get one shot like all the other businesses throughout the city. My last two questions, um, will other services be impacted by reallocating the CDBG funds? Some have asked if nonprofits will be impacted by this reallocation. Nonprofits will not be impacted through the creation of this program. And in fact, staff is recommending through the new COVID funds that an additional two hundred thousand be allocated to assist our nonprofit agencies speci- specializing in providing basic needs. There's also been some questions about road resurfacing. Will that be impacted? It's important to note that CDBG funds are only a small portion of multiple funding sources that fund roads, only about six percent. We are partially offsetting the loss of this revenue with an increase with state motor fuel tax. And lastly, will there be oversight? We wanted to make sure that not only is this a fair and equitable program, but that it's also meaningful, and that also that it will do what is the main goal, which is to make sure that we help our local businesses. Uh, internally from the city, we're going to make sure that there's checks and balances that are built into the program. Overseeing and monitoring the program will be done by city staff and funds will be partially provided upfront with the remainder to be distributed by Investorar on a reimbursement basis. The loan is then forgiven partially each month until a year is passed based on the satisfactory reporting, and all requirements are being met. As I mentioned earlier, we are very fortunate, Investorar already had a similar program in place. And now I'm going to turn over to Brian Gay, President and CEO of Investorar, to talk more about the role in the program.
Thank you, Trevor. Uh, Alderman O'Connor, did you have a question?
Yes, uh, could I direct it to Trevor? Uh, I have two questions. The hundred thousand dollars that was uh, allocated originally from the Hope Wall project, has that literally been replaced? Because there is the same number of one point four million, is that correct? Where did the other hundred, where did that hundred thousand come from? That is, that is correct, Alderman O'Connor. And I'll let maybe others weigh in. But yes, the, the money for the Hope Wall um, through the CDBG is still, uh, actually, let me back up. The playground will still be funded through that CDBG. Um, but the hundred thousand is still going to be looked at from other sources to try and make up the difference. So it still adds up to the one point four. My, my second question is, you referred to the set aside. How much value is the set aside? What's the dollar amount on that? So it's up to fifty percent. So if the first round is seven hundred thousand dollars, it would be three hundred and fifty thousand. Up to that, it could not go over more.
Well, great. If there's no other questions at this time for Trevor, um, I'd just like to give uh, and, and thank you for, for all the comments uh, from David and from Trevor up to this point, and Mayor City Council. Appreciate the opportunity for you to talk about this exciting program that we've been working. Um, you know, I, I feel as though uh, we, we've been somewhat uh, building the airplane while we're trying to take it off here, but with a, a goal of getting relief to our small businesses in the community as quickly as possible. As Trevor had mentioned, uh, we had had a previous program that uh, that Investorar signed an agreement with last year, last fall, uh, to administer a portion of the seat, of the city's CDBG funds through our uh, uh, through our micro-enterprise forgivable loan program, and not for a lack of trying, but up to this point, we, you know, we have not been able to um, identify successful businesses that we've been able to get these funds out to. And so um, throughout this process, we, we really uh, noticed a, a number of our small businesses in the community uh, that were being devastated by this uh, coronavirus pandemic. And uh, you know, through this program, I think we can make some, some great changes in terms of uh, widening the scope of this program and providing the, the necessary funds to help these businesses get up and running. Uh, based on the data that we have available to us through Investorar, uh, we've identified those businesses um, with fifty employees or less is, is a, a large majority of our small businesses. Anything larger than that, I think we really would, you know, we all agreed and through this process that those are really medium and large-sized businesses. And may, and these funds would not be best used there. Um, while we've been developing the fund, the original uh, program was designed for those businesses with one to five uh, employees and would incentivize them up to fifteen thousand dollars. With us taking a look at this program, again, we're still looking at those uh, micro-enterprise uh, businesses, those one to five employees, uh, up to fifteen thousand dollars. But those businesses with six to fifty employees would be eligible for up to uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in funding. Uh, the fund would provide uh, forgive, uh, forgivable loans or a grant uh, to help our small businesses by su- supporting their working capital needs, such as payroll, mortgage, rent and utilities and other expenses related to restarting or maintaining operations of businesses. Um, as our businesses are preparing to hopefully reopen with the governor's extension uh, of the shelter at home, uh, in our minds, uh, these funds are designed to cover those operating expenses uh, for thirty days. And we're, and are intended to assist with the retention and expand uh, creation of new jobs in the City of Aurora. And as we have planned, these funds should be available just in time uh, for the, uh, for the latest order to expire and those businesses uh, starting to prepare to open. Um, so with that, uh, we've talked a little bit about our background, reasoning why we're looking to do this. Um, uh, some, uh, some brief information for you regarding the timing of this program. So with city council's approval this evening, we'll move forward with opening up an application for this uh, for this forgivable loan program starting on Friday, May first. And at that point in time, we'll also be hosting two webinars, um, which uh, Jessica and the uh, will be, give us a little bit more information here shortly. But we'll be hosting two webinars on May first as well, in both English and Spanish, to really give the, the nuts and bolts of this program. Uh, after that, the application will be open for two weeks, closing on May fifteenth, at which point in time uh, Investorar and city staff will uh, uh, begin our uh, work to uh, complete the uh, uh, complete a lottery, which at that point, Chris will give a little bit more information, but we'll be using a random number generator uh, to select those businesses that have complete applications submitted to us before the deadline. And we'll be then beginning our process to evaluate those uh, applications more completely. Uh, the reason why we're looking to do a lottery in this case is uh, we expect uh, more applicants than what we can fund through this program. And certainly, uh, because of the uh, limited number of funds that we have, as well as our limited resources in terms of processing applications, we need to make sure that we can move through those efficiently uh, as possible. Investorar staff, um, as I mentioned, will be, will kind of, will be leading the charge in terms of the underwriting of these applications and going through that, checking for completeness and to verify uh, that they are eligible to receive those funds. Um, also, as Trevor had mentioned, uh, there will be a fifty percent set aside in total of funds, not to exceed fifty percent, uh, for those businesses located in the HUD-approved and defined NRS A area. And uh, with any additional funds going to all other Aurora-based businesses, and these would be businesses located within the city's municipal boundaries. Uh, also, uh, just to reiterate, the program um, uh, based on funding that's available to us, uh, will be split into two segments of seven hundred thousand dollars each, for a total of one point four million dollars. The first allocation would be immediately available to be distributed to s- to those businesses selected in the lottery system, and with a portion of the funding being delivered upfront and the remainder to be uh, provided on a reimbursement basis. The second allocation, dependent on the receipt of funding from HUD, would then be provided in the same manner as a partial payment upfront, followed by a re- uh, reimbursement process. Unless there are any questions uh, for me at this time, I will gladly hand it over, uh, Alderman Franco.
So you mentioned that the NRS area is, is entitled to fifty percent of the money.
Correct.
Which, are they eligible for more than fifty percent?
No.
Because, so here, here's my thought. I, I look at the map and I see ten percent of the city geographically is in that area. I get how important that is to our downtown, the whole thing. So ninety percent of the geographic area is going to get fifty percent. Ten percent of geographic area is going to get fifty percent. All right, it is what it is. I just want to make sure that I would think it'd be much more disproportionate if they're eligible for more than fifty percent, and it was explained to me earlier that they may be. So if you could expound that, that would, it would be good.
But that is correct. In early discussions, we had talked about, you know, the potential of having more than the fifty percent, but in this case, um, again, look, um, evaluating the, the dollars that we have available, it would be up to, but, but limited to fifty percent of the total funding. And, and I believe as treasure, as Trevor had mentioned, um, that any funds that are not used in the NRS A then would go out to the uh, to the pool for the rest of the community. All right, there are no.
Alderman Masiacos. Alderman Masiacos.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I brought this up in some conversations I had with staff. Uh, this application process, it sounds like it's in the works. Is there a, is there a discussion about also providing this application in Spanish?
Uh, yes, there is. So in this case here, we are providing uh, an online portal that uh, will help us administer this uh, program efficiently uh, online. Uh, it'll also allow us to um, better track our uh, uh, supporting documents needed for the overall reporting of the program. Uh, then what we'll also do is we have uh, everything that we're providing to the applicants will be uh, provided in both English and Spanish. That includes the application, uh, the webinars that we'll be doing, and any follow-up, uh, any, any follow-up reporting will also be done in Spanish, so. Um, and then we all, we'll also have a, um, not only just online, but we'll also have uh, paper, uh, copies of the application as well, uh, printed in both English and Spanish.
Okay, and, and they'll provide it to the Alderman?
Yes. So we are planning, or if, if I may, uh, we are planning to uh, work with uh, many of our resource partners within the community. These are the chambers of commerce, uh, the different associations Aurora Downtown, the Mayor's Office of Economic Development to really spread the, the word here. Um, and that in, we're, we are putting together a packet of information that will include a press release, uh, FAQ, uh, as well as the applications, uh, again, both in English and Spanish.
All right, thank you very much.
Alderman Smith?
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, thank you all for putting this program together. It's really, it's an amazing, fantastic um, idea and wonderful, um, hopefully uplifting and helpful to our small businesses. Um, but I too was one of the ones that was concerned about the double dipping and had a conversation um, with you guys uh, as we spoke. And um, just want to make sure that many of the changes that were made. And, um, just want to make sure that many of the changes that were made, um, I don't know if they're reflected in the information that we've been given in our alderman's report. So I just want to make sure the changes that, you know, have been discussed. Come to us that way as changes because what we have in our current packets, um, don't have all those changes in there.
Yes, they will. I mean, just to say that they, they will. And one of the reasons we didn't finalize the application, even though we're three to, they were either ways. We wanted to kind of make sure you, we had the chance that we had last week to all discuss this and then make the changes. So we're in the process of making those changes and we have a draft. But all those things will be definitely reflected in the, uh, in the application.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Jenkins.
Mr. Gay, uh, with regards to, uh, the NRS A and businesses outside of that. Now it's my understanding that, uh, those businesses would either have to have one of their employees that they hire or they retain, or the owners themselves have to be from the NRS A area. That's correct?
So there's a, there's a number of ways that a business will be able to qualify. This business, uh, this program, as I, as I had mentioned, uh, is geared towards the retention of existing employees with businesses or those that are creating new biz, uh, uh, new positions, uh, within their business that have a low to moderate income, uh, component to it. And then also there is that third component, those businesses that are locate, uh, those businesses, uh, that are also owned by low to moderate income, owners, uh, with their, the one key difference between those businesses outside of the NRS A do not have to certify. And Chris, um, Regonia can also, uh, give a little bit more information from the, from the HUD perspective and CDBG. But those businesses, um, within the NRS A area would not have to qual, or would not have to certify that there is that retained, they would just have to, uh, state how they're looking to, uh, apply, whether that's through retained job creation or, uh, load or moderate income owners.
Maybe it's a good time to craft. Chris just come in for.
All right. All right. We'll, we'll have Mr., uh, we're going to come on for a second. Alderman Seville, did you have a question on anything Mr. Gay said, or you want to wait till you hear with, uh, Mr. Regona?
Oh, wait.
What's that? Okay. All right. Regona, you want to, or Mr. Regona, you want to go ahead and, um, uh, give your portion of the presentation?
Sure. So I think David, Trevor and Brian, um, presented on most of it. Uh, I do want to bring up some of the other components of the substantial amendment. So as part of the CARES Act, the city received an additional 902,078 dollars as part of COVID-19 relief through, uh, community development block grant. Uh, so we are recommending that 300,000 be placed, uh, into this stable fund for small business forgivable loans. We're also recommending that $200,000, uh, be allocated for nonprofit assistance. So we're going to be releasing an application, uh, probably within the next, uh, 10 to 14 days or so. And doing a lot of the same things that we're recommending here for the stable fund, like holding a webinar, offering an FAQ, offering the application in both English and Spanish, um, and trying to utilize those $200, uh, because we understand that nonprofits have been hit, um, you know, similarly hard with donations and just, uh, in some instances, the volume of, uh, of their clients. Uh, the last piece is an additional $200,000 for, uh, an allocation called subsistence payments. So we're going to be working with our, uh, our local partners, including our continuum of cares, our counties, FEMA in the state, uh, when we're looking at things like direct assistance for rental assistance, uh, direct food payments, um, and, and a whole list of other eligible activities. That does require additional consultation and we are going to be postponing that until we actually receive the dollars. We're hoping, based on what we're hearing from HUD, the money is maybe going to be coming a little bit sooner than in years past. But that would be the third component of this plan. And then I will add, um, Alderman, in your packets, w- we are recommending the, uh, the set aside of 20% for administration costs. So these dollars are going to help us, uh, implement the programs, uh, monitor the backend and make sure that when it comes time for audits and HUD monitorings, that our books are in check and that we don't have to pay the money back. So this 20% is going to allow us until September 30th, 2022, uh, to charge our time back to the grant anytime that we're working on it. The 20% is a set aside that most communities use. If there are leftover dollars or in our further projections, we can certainly go back and reallocate these dollars to new COVID-19 related activities. Um, and then just as far as the, the state of the country, um, you know, we do sit in on a number of national calls and we've been looking into other programs, uh, including Detroit, Nebraska. Similarly, Aurora, Colorado has a, a, a program for up to a million dollars in small business forgivable loans. Uh, we also looked at New York and Seattle, and there's a number of other communities that are trying to do what we're doing. Um, and I'm happy to say that I think we're above the curve and, you know, taking something, you know, the micro enterprise program and changing it into something much larger, uh, for our COVID-19 response. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Alderman Seville.
Hi, this is Adrian. I, I know that we had mentioned, um, the lottery system and Chris, I think that was something you were going to share how businesses were going to be put in the queue for review.
Certainly. So as far as the lottery goes, uh, like Brian mentioned, we're anticipating that the need is going to be more than the availability. And we didn't want this to be a first come, first served. We also, um, wanted to make this fair and equitable for everybody. So what we're doing is we're waiting for all the applications to come in on the 15th. And then we are going to use a random number generator to sort them from top to bottom. So, uh, including the NRS A set aside. And then what we're going to do is we're going to start reviewing the applications from the top, uh, all the way to the bottom until the money runs out. You know, also if we get 500 applications or so, staff doesn't have the capacity to go through those and do a qualitative review, or utilize some type of, uh, points or priority system. So we felt that in order to turn this around and as quickly as we can, uh, to get the money out to our businesses, that this was the fairest way that we can do this. Um, so certainly we'll, we'll be documenting all of the ways that we're, uh, doing our random number generation. And if a business is selected for the lottery, but does not meet our underwriting or is deemed ineligible, we would go to the next business until the money is gone. So we think that given our short window here and, you know, we want to get this money out to the community, um, that, that is the fairest way, at least in our eyes at this point.
Alderman Seville.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to begin by, uh, complimenting city staff. I think they've done a very commendable job with regard to establishing, uh, this program, uh, and an admirable job actually because of this time of economic uncertainty during this worldwide, um, pandemic, I think is very needed. The concerns that I, I want to express this evening, as well as I have already with staff last Friday in my conference, and then yesterday with my phone conversation with, um, Marty Lyons is making sure that we have adequate accountability and oversight, uh, with regard to this. I realize everything was put together very quick and, and it's very timely. But I just want to make sure that we've been able to establish systems in place. Uh, and also maybe having future review by city council with regard to this, uh, to get an update on where we are and the implementation of this program. Trevor Dick did mention checks and balances, but really didn't give us any examples of what those could, uh, might be. And, uh, one of the things that I brought up in my conversations are, uh, will we be looking at putting in liens on people's properties? As one of the means of, of establishing checks and balances and any other, um, uh, means that might be available, I'd like to hear from, um, from city staff if I could please.
I just want to comment that, uh, you know, we, as I mentioned, we are, uh, working on the legal documents that really will support this. And we're kind of buying a little time by starting the program and then we have two weeks until, uh, May 15th. So we've got, you know, two, two and a half weeks to finish the legal documentation. But our suggestions to the attorneys will to give us all rights and I'm not an attorney. I guess you get a lot of attorneys here would probably put the language better than I could in a layman's way. But really all remedies that are available to us, whether they be a lien and quite frankly, whether it's a, a personal liability, you know, if it's a, it's a single entrepreneur that owns the building and the business and so on. So we're going to try to avail ourselves of any remedy that's possible under the law, if something like that happens. That issue is separate from the issue of the HUD issue, which is really a little bit more ministerial, where as long as we do certain things in terms of due diligence, then we, Investor Aurora or the city will not be at risk. But we're going to take it above that to make sure that there is no fraud or anything. And if there is, then we can go out and, uh, go and take any action available to us that the lawyers let us do.
You know, I'm going to come to Mr. Lyons in one second, but to go back to Mr. Gay, because we had this exact same conversation based on the question that Alderman Seville asked. And, um, we talked about you guys are going to have a small army of folks, including you, uh, the city, as well as, uh, the chamber of commerce and their, um, uh, partners that'll be going and actually checking on these businesses to make sure that they're actually operating and doing what they're supposed to be doing. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. And so, you know, the, the great thing here is that, um, while we're redeveloping this program, the, the, the great news is that we already have a program established in which this, uh, which Investor Aurora, is already working with the city on the program. So we have within our underwriting, uh, agreements, uh, documentation already put together. It's going to need some minor modifications for the, you know, for this expansion, but, uh, we do have a lot of those, um, we, we do have a lot of that, assistance in there and making sure that, uh, we are, uh, you know, doing our due diligence, uh, due diligence, asking the right questions and making sure that the, uh, that the reinvestments that we're making into our business community are, are good ones here and that, uh, they're also fair. And as the mayor had mentioned, we, we do have, you know, a small army of individuals between all the offices that have been involved in the process up to this point, uh, Investor Aurora, the Department of Innovation, the Mayor's Office of Economic Development, the Chamber of Commerce, and really all of our partners, uh, partner organizations that, uh, that bring us applicants to these programs, will all be working hand in hand with these businesses. Cause right now nothing is more important to us than making sure that our, uh, small businesses, uh, stay open or when, uh, when the time is right for them to reopen and be successful.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I was going to say Jessica's also here on the line from the Aurora Chamber of Commerce. If anybody has any questions for her.
All right, hold on. We'll come there in a second. I'm coming to you just for, in a second, uh, Mr. Lyons. Alderman Seville, you have a follow-up question?
Just a follow-up please, Mayor. Um, uh, I, I like what I'm hearing in terms of them, uh, city staff getting together and, and formulating some types of, of a oversight and, and a structure involved. Dave Debo mentioned that he's going to be doing that with all the staff in the next couple of weeks. Can we maybe have a report in a couple of weeks as to the systems that will be, uh, put in place and be shared by the city council?
You know what? It's not unreasonable, um, to have a report out because we're going to have 30 days to pull this program together. So if we can sometime around June 1st, before we start, um, actually, uh, giving checks out, if we have a report back to city council, just let know how successful it is and what businesses you've looked at out of the folks that have actually applied. That's not unreasonable. Uh, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you. And then last, Mayor, um, if I may say, um, in terms of future review and sometimes in the summer, just to give us a report on how the money's being spent and the businesses that we're helping, I think it'd be very, uh, worthwhile and helpful for the city council.
Absolutely. And Alderman Jenkins, I'll come to you in a second. I want Mr. Lyons to have been waiting, um, patiently. You're on mute, brother. You're on mute.
Um, I think that it's really, you know, the questions are, uh, are fantastic. And I do want to point out that the last person in the army that keeps on getting, uh, referred to is Linda Reed, who does the single audit and makes sure that for the, for the past 10 years, we've complied with everything HUD has ever asked. So we've, that we have a spotless record on our single audit. I know in the distant past we had some issues, but, uh, that comment is actually not for council, that's for staff to make sure they get it that, um, at the end of the day, accounting is going to be looking at everything to make sure that we did it all the right way. The, uh, second part that I guess I would like to, uh, uh, answer Alderman Seville's question about liens. These are going to be operating loans. We're not really putting a loan into brick and mortar. We're, for the most part, we're going to be putting it into salaries. So as an expense loan, it's going to get used and it's going to be gone. So as far as us having a, a lien process, I don't think that's really going to be appropriate. And I had a good, long conversation with Chris and the, uh, CDBG team about how we handle that, that a business stays in, um, you know, in business for a month and two months and three months and four months. That's our metric and over those monthly periods, we will forgive a loan. So if we have a $12,000 loan, it's going to get forgiven, $1,000 at a time each month. If the business goes out of business, the whole loan, according to the HUD, uh, guidelines is forgiven. They, they declare bankruptcy, they're out and we're not in the mix anymore either. We're not responsible for repaying that loan back. Again, this is a risky proposition, but it is a risky time. So we're not looking to lean somebody's property and neither is HUD to get the money back. We're trying to save operations, not brick and mortar. And then lastly, hold on, my screen went blank on the side. I think that the questions about annual reporting, think about all the work we do on the residential rehab. We have committees that go through our work every single year on the residential side, whether it's the, um, doing rehab pro- programs or helping individuals get their utility or rent paid. So I, I think that we should have, as the mayor pointed out, that June 1, here's what we're about to do. And then as soon as we're done, we should report back and say, here's the loans, here's what they went to. Here's what's going on with those businesses. And that's pretty much standard operating procedure for Dr. Holloway's group when it comes to CDBG administration. We're just really used to it because these other programs have been around for decades. And that's it.
Thank you. Alderman Jenkins.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, during the, uh, conversation we had with staff, I brought up, uh, if with their opportunities since we're going to restructure, uh, the funding sources for the, the resurfacing, which could be an additional 100,000 that could be put towards the, the stable, uh, program. And, uh, still want to know if, if that's possible. So we can make this 1.5, uh, as opposed to 1.4.
Mr. Lyons.
Well, I would say it's possible. I would rather, um, wait and see. Let's see if we get up to 1.4. We say we have all this demand, but at the same time, we had a micro loan program that didn't launch. It was, had a hundred thousand dollars. So rather than go forward and say, we want to take that extra hundred thousand, I think if we came up and had that great success story to say, we've allocated all 1.4 million, council, we'd like to do the, um, remaining hundred thousand, that could be a time to do that to, for remaining four or five loans.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, uh, Mr. Lyons, but I think with regards to, unfortunately, what has happened on the, the federal level with regards to the monies that, uh, a lot of the small businesses, uh, were not able to realize. I think once this, uh, once we initiate this, we're going to see a tremendous, uh, a tremendous, uh, number of people applying for this. So any, again, uh, I hear what you're saying, but if we can, if we can increase it, because we have the, the ability to do it, let's do it.
This is Adrian.
Alderman, go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Alderman Jenkins, for bringing that up. We are still looking at the possibility. One of the activities that we had identified as a potential move to another area of HUD funding, we're still trying to explore if that's a possibility due to, sorry, I'm going to start the video. Due to the requirements of that project needing to meet certain eligibility elements for the home program. So until we get some finalization on that, we won't necessarily know if we can utilize that hundred thousand dollars that we would pull from a different bank. Hopefully by the time we may start executing loans, we'll have some certification on those projects that we can actually add that additional thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. But at this time, um, we won't be able to determine that because the project is still not defined in that level. Um, Chris, did you want to add something related to Todd School?
Uh, no, you said it all. So we, based on the size of the stable fund, we could execute a minor agreement or a, a minor amendment requiring city council approval. We wouldn't have to go through the, the whole process of completing a substantial amendment, offering public comment and public hearing. So we would have some more internal controls over that. But like Adrian mentioned, uh, that's something that we can definitely look into over the next, uh, two weeks.
Alderman Garza.
My question for Jessica.
Jessica from the chamber?
Yes.
Is Jessica from Chamber Commerce on? Is Jessica from Chamber Commerce on?
She's not.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Yeah. My question is, after May 1st, when the application want to be online, you want to be able to help some owners of the property owners in case they have some difficulties to fill out the application?
Support, she's looking for support.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for asking that question, Alderman Garza. So that's actually one of, I think, the strengths of the program we've designed here is that truly everything is going to be available in English and Spanish. So we partnered with some of our business development organizations in the area to be able to offer that one-on-one kind of technical case management in Spanish as well. The Aurora Regional Hispanic Chamber is going to be helping with that. And there'll be a couple of others as well. So we will be able to have someone walk, walk them through applications, whether they speak Spanish or English.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Alderman? Alderman Franco?
So are we going to have this on the website under the stable program? So if a business wants to get involved, they can click on the city website, give a link and get them all the information?
So I believe we'll have it. Oh, Jessica?
All right, you're fine. I was going to say, I can probably jump in on this one. Really, I think as we start to look forward, if the fund is to be approved tonight, why don't I give you just kind of several steps that are going to happen as folks can look to apply? So as has been said a couple of times tonight, this entire process has been incredibly collaborative and that's going to carry into the future. So I've been in contact with the two other chambers in the area, the Aurora Regional Hispanic Chamber and the Quad County African American Chamber. So we'll be working together in addition to all the other business development organizations in the region to really spread as far of a net as we can and start to get businesses in that pipeline to apply while city staff and invest really work the technical side of this program. So yes, that information will be available on Invest Aurora's website, actually. So it's going to be, there'll be a specific landing page that'll come out. Tomorrow, we'll be releasing all the information and that webpage. So that'll be live in the morning. Folks can find that and start to download this week, the FAQ, and see really what information they need to be gathering. So the application is not going to open until Friday. It'll open Friday morning, but over the next couple of days, folks will have some time to really see what information they need. And as they do that, so a few things that are going to be available to them. We've mentioned that the materials are available in English and Spanish. So that's going to include the program flyer, the FAQ, the application, that webpage content. The press release will go out in Spanish tomorrow as well. So that'll all be coming out. If funding is approved tonight, this Friday, we'll be hosting two webinars, one in English at 1:00 PM and one entirely in Spanish at 5:00 PM. Those webinars are really going to give businesses a chance to ask questions live to Invest Aurora and city staff about the application process. We're also going to be recording those webinars and we'll make them available afterwards to anyone who's unable to attend. But that'll be a great time for folks to get those questions answered about eligibility, what they need in front of them, all of those kinds of things. And then moving forward, as we said, that case management will be available.
So that was a nice, long explanation. So here's, here's my scenario. Somebody calls me tomorrow, they want a small business in my ward. How do I find out about the program? I'll tell them it's a stable fund. Go to the Invest Aurora website and it will, it'll detail the next steps. And that's, that's basically what I want to do. I just want to get them in the right path.
Let me ask a question. Will there, will there be links on the City of Aurora website as well as the Chamber Commerce website?
Mayor, this is Clayton. Yeah, there'll be a link from the homepage directly to the Investor site.
All right.
So, and I actually, I can give that, the, the site won't be actually available until tomorrow morning, but the, the website for, for all of you that are, that are going to look into it, the, the address is www.investaurora.org/stabilfund. That's S-T-A-B-L-E-F-U-N-D.
And I'll only add that the lot, the, the webpage is going to be live tomorrow, but we're working on finalizing all of the, the things that Jessica mentioned. So if, if someone was looking for the application to get started right away tomorrow, we're in the, you know, the 10th hour here, finalizing everything. So there'll be stuff popping up over the next couple of days, but certainly Friday morning, everything will be available.
And I'll just add that I've already briefed the call center staff on this program. They've already received some calls in relationship to that. So 256 INFO is a quick one and the, the staff there knows how to redirect people to Invest Aurora for additional information. So it's funny, you know, all vehicles available to us as far as communication, getting the word out, we are going to utilize, but Invest Aurora's landing page.
Any other questions? Alderman, Alderman O'Connor?
Not a question, but just a statement that I'm very appreciative of how so much work has been done by so many staff members in the city in pulling this together. I think it's going to be a case of there is a special place in heaven for anybody who works with HUD and understands how this can all be done. Because in our looking at all the material here, we understand all of the different complications that have come about in, in order to put this, this program together. So my compliments to the staff members. I think we're, we're going to have an excellent program, just an opportunity to show that we're, we're, we're caring and we're trying to, to meet some of the, the real concerns that are out there because of COVID-19. I also wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, you're very smart and always sitting in front of that clock because we realize the time going by. And when it reaches midnight, we know we're all going to turn into pumpkins so that we're, we're watching it very closely. So, but thank you for doing that. Thank you to everybody that has worked very hard in getting this done.
Let me, as Alderman O'Connor so eloquently spoken, there's this big old clock behind me ticking away. So let me just wrap up since most Aldermen have had an opportunity to speak and, and comment on this issue is that this is about stability, the stable fund, standing together with Aurora Business Local Emergency Fund. Standing together with Aurora Business Local Emergency Fund. That's what we're doing with our business community because we recognize the value of what they offer to our, our city. And the fact is, the simple fact is, their success is our success. We get our revenue from their success. Alderman Jenkins, you had pointed out that, you know, you wanted it to be 1.5 million dollars. Well, it was only two weeks ago that myself and Alex Alexandru had our first meeting with Adrian Holloway and her staff and Chris Regona and, and the, and the team Trevor Dick, where we only had $200,000 to offer to our business community. Needless to say, that wasn't a good conversation with me and, and the staff, which is why we worked very hard to make sure that we had a substantial amount of money, the 1.4, which after hearing 200,000, 1.4 sounds very good. Of course, larger amounts would, would, would sound good. And if, as Adrian pointed out, if we're able to, if we're able to get other funds that where we can support our business community, we will absolutely. But I, I think we all agree that these are unprecedented times for our residents, our, because our partner agencies, especially for our business community, and making sure that we show them support and give them stability. So when we are finally off of this, this order and we're back out in the community and back out, you know, working and, and trying to make Aurora the best city we possibly can, that they have, they have that, that initial, that initial push, that initial stability to help them get back in the game, just like we're working, you know, for the city to get back in after this, after this layoff as well. So I really appreciate my staff. I appreciate Jessica Linder Gallo and Brian Gay and everybody, you know, that, that came together in such a short time now. Because we've been off and we're working from our home, for some reason, this two weeks seems like two months, but really it's only been two weeks, you know? And, and although we have been home for only 45 days, it seems like a whole lot longer than that. And, and our staff has been able to perform some miracles in a short amount of time, to the point where as Chris Regona pointed out, that we're ahead of the curve throughout the nation with, with what we've, what we've thrown together. And we will set an example for other communities and I'm sure will follow suit. But, you know, they're going to be looking at the stable fund and wondering what it means. And we'll tell them, standing together with Aurora Businesses Local Emergency Fund. So I want to thank all the Aldermen for, for working with our staff and making sure that, you know, although as, as Dave pointed out, this ain't perfect, you know? But it's, it's, it's a very good program that's going to help a lot of businesses, small businesses here in Aurora get back on their feet after this crisis. All right, well, there's been a motion and a second on the floor. And we've had a number of questions. So clerk, we want to call the roll on this?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lochi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12 As?
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. All right, we have one last item in our new business, 20-0269, the bill summary and large bills list. If there's no objection?
I'm moving pay our bills.
Well, hold on one second, one second. If there's no objection, can, is there any, if there's no questions or objections, can we put this on the consent agenda? All right, we'll go ahead. Madam Clerk, if you place that item on the consent agenda, but I appreciate that motion, Alderman Hartburns, if we're going to wrap it all up with the consent agenda. You can be the first one to talk after we read the list of consent agenda. With the clerk plea, you need a few minutes to pull the consent agenda together, clerk?
Uh, no, I don't, Mr. Mayor.
Will the clerk please read the consent agenda in full?
20-0094, resolution requesting approval of a three-year maintenance agreement with CDWG Corporation of Vernon Hills, Illinois, under the National IPA Purchasing Agreement Contract Number 201801, 1-01 for an annual amount of $37,700 for the city's storage area network, which is a total amount of $113,100 for the three years. 20-0140, Anordinance Amending Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 5 of the City Code of the City of Aurora, titled Local Preference and Contracts. 20-0148, a resolution requesting approval for a three-year software maintenance agreement with the Zen City Technologies U.S. Incorporated for the Zen City Platform in the amount of $144,000, which will be paid annually in the amount of $48,000. 20-0208, a resolution authorizing a contract with WE Monday Landscaping and Garden Center Incorporated, 1135 Mitchell Road, Suite 100, Aurora, Illinois 60505, to extend the unit prices submitted for the citywide landscape repair and maintenance contract. 20-0213, resolution authorizing approval of professional services in the amount not to exceed $89,989 to perform cyber remediation with 1898 &amp; Co, part of Burns &amp; McDonald for the water treatment plant SCADA system to enhance the security posture of critical infrastructure in the City of Aurora. 20-0218, a resolution requesting approval for contract amendment on approved resolution 19-175, dated June 11th, 2019, for IT Risk Assessment Data Defenders LLC. Corporate Headquarters, 111 West Jackson Boulevard, Suite 1700, Chicago, Illinois 60604, in the amount not to exceed $137,550. 20-0250, a resolution authorizing the Green Power Partnership Agreement, a voluntary program of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, that assists organizations with procuring electricity generated from renewable resources and promoting their green power leadership. 20-0252, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class C City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Aurora Spirit &amp; Wine LLC, DBA Aurora Spirit &amp; Wine, 1669 Montgomery Road, Number 1, Aurora 60504. 20-0253, a resolution approving an amendment to the existing lease between the City of Aurora and Subway for the property located at 5 East Downer Place, Aurora, Illinois, to allow for a 50% deferral on Subway's rent for the months of April and May 2020 due to COVID-19, with the deferred rent to be backpaid in 12 equal monthly installments from June 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2021. 20-0259, a resolution awarding Langton Group, Woodstock, Illinois, as a 2020 contractor for downtown mowing and landscape maintenance with the option for two one-year extensions. 20-0264, a resolution approving security reduction number one for Meadow Ridge subdivision. 20-0269, bill summary and large bill list.
So move.
There's been a motion to accept the consent agenda, seconded by Alderman Franco, moved by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or motions to remove any items from the consent agenda? There being no questions to move the items to consent agenda? Can you read, call the roll, clerk?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lochi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12 As?
All right, motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Is there a motion accepted, filed, the treasurer's report? There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries by voice vote. Thank you, guys, for another successful video meeting. Is there no, no further business to come to city council? There's been a motion to adjourn by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed, y'all can just sit there staring at a blank screen. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Great job. We did another one, man, this was a good one.
Bye, everybody.
All right, good job, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Let me out of here.
This is, bye-bye.
Recording, thank you.